All right, let's call meeting board. With that, I would for a call.
Okay, Mayor Manny.
Here.
Keel?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
And Brendan in his absence with notice.
Any additions to the agenda? I was looking for a motion to approve.
I think most to approve the agenda is second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have approval of last meeting minutes.
I think motion approved last meeting minutes. Second.
Discussion?
Just quick on the policy. Policy. I guess the one we did. I'm so sorry, I lost it. The one we did where it was a. Yes. The ticketed deal. Was that, was that a? Am I off my rocker here? Was that ordinance or was it a policy?
It was a policy.
It was a policy?
Yes.
Okay, I was thinking it was an ordinance. Are we?
No, it's just a policy we're implementing within the city.
All right, as long as we're on the same page, I just wanted to make sure. So, just wanted to share.
Because basically, it's a policy because it's how staff treats stuff internally in the office.
Okay.
That's a policy. An ordinance more or less governs the citizens, what the rules and regulations are for this difference.
Well, I, I just wanted to make sure because I remember us having a conversation about ordinance too. Wanted to make sure to invite us later on, so.
Right, and this is a policy because how we internally are going to handle ticketed ordinance violations. Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion, questions? All right, we got a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. No bills submitted for payment? Ben? Then. Don't have time on that one, do we? No. Resolution 2016 dash three, establish a joint jurisdictional boundary line between City of Sioux Falls and the City of Hartford. Go ahead.
Okay, um, basically, City of Sioux Falls had contacted me. They are, and I apologize, they were going to send a representative tonight, but they didn't have anybody available, so they asked me to kind of convey to the council, you know, what they're proposing. But the City of Sioux Falls is updating their comprehensive plan. And within that comprehensive plan, there was a section that talks about the joint jurisdiction area. So it's the joint jurisdiction that the City of Sioux Falls has with the county. Basically, it encompasses, you know, how Sioux Falls is going to grow, you know. It, it's an outline of where they expect their growth area to be. And like I said, it's just part of their comprehensive plan. Now, state law says that for a joint jurisdiction area, you can't go. Basically, if you have one city, like City of Sioux Falls and City of Hartford, the equal distance between those two city limits, you can't go beyond that point for your joint jurisdiction unless both cities agree upon it. So, what's a, this map that's been in your packet? The City of Sioux Falls, the blue line is where that equal distance line is. And the City of Sioux Falls would like to basically follow the bold black line for their joint jurisdiction. So you can see, they're going to cross that equal distance line a little bit. It, it's, it's a little less than eighth of a mile, so it's not by a lot. And the reason for that being is that they don't want to follow that equal distance line just because it's a crooked line. It's very hard to describe legally in any documents, you know. It's hard to show in their comp plan or describe. So, they like to be able to just follow, you know, the section lines or the quarter section lines until they get a straight line so they can legally describe it better. But since it crosses that equal distance line and comes into our joint jurisdiction a little bit, they need approval from the City of Hartford to do that. So that's what this resolution 2016 three is asking for. It's asking that City of Sioux Falls and the City of Hartford agree to establish this joint jurisdiction on this black line. They did come to the PNC meetings last week and present that to the PNC board. Basically, they saw no issues with it. You can see, our city limits are the white area here in Hartford. The lighter green area is basically our growth area. We're not even getting close to that joint jurisdiction line at all, or that equilibrium line. It's going to be quite a few years before we even grow that far at all. Where our growth area is at the Buffalo, as I said, and we're not even out to there yet. It's going to be quite a few years before we get there. Plus then we'll have to manage crossing Skunk Creek, so. I guess the PNC board recommends approval. They don't see any big issue with, you know, crossing that equilibrium line just a little bit, so they're recommending approval. I, I don't see any issues of where it would hurt us, you know, growth wise either. And this is, remember, basically, just what they're showing in their comp plan. I mean, it could be subject to change in another two years, five years, but this is how they would like to show it in their updated plan at this point.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
If. If we move that line to the west, to the corner? I, I can see, I can see where they're taking that corner and straightening it out.
Yeah.
But what about that blue line that darts off to the northwest? How are they going to, what are they doing, what are they proposing to straighten that out?
That's Crooks.
That's Crooks area, yeah.
Our twin us and Crooks is where that, the other one is Crooks and them, so.
Yeah, this, this one going north and south is just between Sioux Falls and Hartford. This one is the divine line between Crooks and Sioux Falls.
Yeah, but it, it looks like they're projecting, projecting to give Crooks.
Going to Crooks area, yeah. They're moving into Crooks area.
But what I'm getting at is, how come the black line? How come the black line doesn't go straight, straight north?
You mean further north?
Yeah. Cause that, cause it's.
I mean, they're proposing it over here, but this is all they're asking for right here.
Yeah, I know.
As far as going by the projected growth.
But I'm curious, the blue line that goes up and left?
Yep, this one?
That's the other one.
This one?
Right.
Whose line is that?
That's our line between us and Crooks. Because Crooks is over here, and it's us.
Oh, that's not us and Sioux Falls.
There was an equal distant line between there.
So that's why Sioux Falls wasn't worried about it.
Yeah, Sioux Falls ain't worried about this line. They're worried about this line between us. And these other two lines are between Sioux Falls and Crooks and us and Crooks.
All right.
Yep.
I'm going to make a motion to approve resolution number 2016 dash three.
Second.
Discussion, questions?
I'm, I'm more concerned about the blue line that goes south that we can't see. Is there be an area in the future that we get a little bit of impact from Sioux Falls? Well, this just shows I'm taking a little section to make it convenient for them, but is there areas south where?
Not with us. See, this, this which is attached to the resolution? This is their joint jurisdiction area. As it goes south, they're not crossing that equilibrium line at all. They're, they're staying on their side of it. It's just this little section that shows up here, you see now? That's the only portion that they're planning to cross.
Is that entirely?
With us anyway.
Is that entirely east of Songbird Acres?
Yes, 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 it doesn't include Songbird Acres at all.
All right. So the, if I understand correctly, with this one eighth of a mile addition, in essence, if we approve it tonight, they will get a tax revenue off of that, that area.
This is just zoning. No, it has nothing to do with it, yes.
It's still in the county of the fellowship where there's weeks to buy taxes.
This line is all in the county. Sioux Falls doesn't take over anything. This is just zoning and a map for their comp plan, yes. It doesn't change anything with the taxes at all. Sioux Falls isn't taking over this land, it's still county land. You know, their city limits aren't changing. It, it's a future map, basically, it's just part of their comp.
I attended it twice, so I'm familiar with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and, and so I, I understand that. I just, uh, you know, David Kolya type scenario, you know, and, and, I just want to, you know, kind of draw a line in sand, which I think in essence we're doing. But, um. You're comfortable with it?
I am, I don't see us.
Okay. Um, they're, they're. Hang on, hang on, Mark, give me a second here, please. Uh, has AGDC or AG, yeah, AGDC seen this yet?
We haven't talked about it in our meetings, but Chris brought up to me and I don't see any issue with it now. We actually, or maybe talked about joint jurisdiction, establishing that in January, but, but I won't get into that now, but.
That's fine. As, as long as AGDC is apprised for this and, 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 you know, they are cognizant of, of, you know, not having a Cherry Lake Reserve, whatever it was called before, situation. If you're, you're comfortable with that, then I'm comfortable.
Yeah, I am, and, and to be clear, I have not consulted AGDC on this.
Okay.
But I, I don't see any issue with it. I don't, I mean, it's.
And, and neither do I, but I just want to make sure AGDC is on board. Okay, I mean, even though we're going to take a vote tonight, I, I just, I'm going to ask.
You don't have to take a vote tonight if you want to postpone this to the next agenda. I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, I think we got a motion in a second. I think we'll, I think we'll, if that we have. I think that, in my opinion, when I look at it, it's now or way down the road at some point. I mean, this way it's squared up.
Yeah, I'm almost not going to have.
At some point or another, that line's crooked and it's going to cut halfway through a neighborhood and it's going to have to be squared up, so.
And tell you the truth, between Crooks, T and Harrisburg, they're going a lot more to their area than ours, yeah.
But this, this is merely for Sioux Falls' comprehensive plan.
It is, that's just it.
This, this is county. This is county land. This is a mile and a half east.
Yeah.
Of the exit on the north side of the road. Hartford has no claim to taxes, to zoning, to planning, to nothing out there.
And, and you're perfectly right. Remember, this is their, their comp plan. This is an establishing joint jurisdiction.
I understand.
This is just their, part of their comp plan that maybe in the future, this is where it will be, you know, so.
I just remember sitting in a, in a auditorium full of people in regards to Cherry, what was it, Cherry Lake, Cherry Creek?
Water Creek, yeah.
And, and, and I know how our citizens feel about this kind of stuff. I'm with you a hundred percent. I know where you're coming from, but I just wanted to just voice that concern. And, um, yeah, it's tolerable.
Montana.
Yeah.
Jones.
Yes.
Yes.
Ford?
Yeah.
And Nelson?
Yes.
All right, resolution 2016 dash four, resolution to transfer contingency funds. This is what we settled to last month, I believe. And we know some funds had some things, so it's time to show them back up and get them back to where they need to be.
Yep, so basically, this resolution, like I said, now that we're getting towards the end of the year, we look at our budget to see maybe we're running a little bit low in a few of our accounts, whether it be, you know, salaries for streets or in our pool fund or whatnot. But when we budgeted our 2016, we put $50,000 in a contingency fund, so that's in our budget. And with that money, if we have any shortfalls in the general fund, and just in the general fund, we can transfer that many out of that contingency fund and cover any shortfalls in these other accounts within the general fund. So that's what this resolution 2016 four would do. We're running a little short in our animal control services. Our bills came in this summer and this fall a little larger than we expected, so hopefully this transfer 2000 would cover those shortfalls. Swimming pool fund, we running a little short this year also. First category was salaries. Now, if you remember, back in the spring, we switched the starting pay from our lifeguards from eight twenty-five up to ten. So of course we paid out more than salary, so hence we're running a little low in salaries. Utilities were short because we had that big mid-American energy bill that we had to pay upfront. And then capital improvements, with the waiting pool addition, we needed to expand our chemical building to house more of the pumping system or whatnot, so that's another $2,500. And then under planning and zoning, we have engineering field, sorry, engineering fees that we'd like to supplement because that seventeen seven in engineering fees was for a project we had added. We had asked, or we had voted to have our engineers do some figures on that North Main extension. So that's something that the council voted to do, so we didn't have those funds in our budget. So this, out of the $50,000, we'd like to transfer $30,169, $32 to these other funds.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2016, yes, for.
Second. Discussion? Matt? Hold vote. Nelson?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Montana. All right, first reading ordinance 638, 2016 supplemental appropriation ordinance.
Okay, this ordinance is kind of similar to our contingency transfer, but this supplemental 2016 budget and a supplemental appropriation is basically if, if we're running short in any other funds besides at the general, because we can't use contingency money in other funds. We can't use it for the water fund, the sewer fund. So if we're running short in any other funds, or if we have a larger shortfall in the general fund that we don't have enough contingency money for. So this supplemental ordinance will handle those shortfalls. The only thing we have in the general fund that I foresee as a major shortfall is thirty five, or $30,000 for engineering fees. We had added the project of Mickelson Road, engineering fees for that, so that would cover that shortfall in the general fund. And then the other shortfall, there's the pool fund is expenses for the new waiting pool. So we need to use, basically, what was in reserves for the pool fund, and then we need to transfer an extra about $32,000 from our general fund to the pool fund. This will put that pool fund balance back at zero. We were running a negative in it, so it puts it back at zero, and we'll settle that. And then Diamond Trail, the east side, we did that project back in 2015, but we had one engineering bill that came through in 2016 that was not expected, so we need to cover that. That wasn't in the budget, we need to put that in the budget. And then the other, only other fund is in the water fund. We're running short a little bit on the water that we purchased. The bills are larger for, we're purchasing more water from real water, but hence we're also billing out more water, so you know, we're getting that on the backside. And then we added that project at the water, up along the Colton Road, so it's going to supplement that. So that's what this supplemental ordinance would do.
Make a motion to approve first reading ordinance number 638.
Second.
Discussion? All right, hold vote, Montana.
Yeah.
Jones?
Yep.
Keel?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, with that, we'll go report. And should I report, Jared?
Hello?
Hello.
That's some, speaking for them in the school zones, meaning I bet the elders have been trying to make sure we're visible in the school zones before and after school. No miss, no issues that we're seeing right now. We've had a couple complaints about reckless drivers driving between the dump site and railroad street. There's that little ditch there, so people are, when it was really wet, they were mudding in that ditch in between. So we got a couple plates and we're following up on that currently as we speak. So, another note here is that all the old plates are now expired. So if you got old plates on the vehicle sitting out, don't drive it, we need to get your plates on. Special attention, we had some snow tickets from the Blizzard. We just had a few of those. It wasn't the usual twenty-five on the first snow, so it wasn't nearly as many as normal, so, which is good. As you guys all know, I-90 is back open, the bridge going over that, open with no restriction, and I think they're supposed to paint the lines here in the next couple weeks if they have any.
They did.
They did.
They did, okay. Awesome. Also saw from last weekend, there was reported a ding-dong ditch was starting up again. Only one report, they weren't able to find the juveniles, but just so you guys are aware, and if you guys hear from anybody else, tell them to call in the metro, see if we can get that taken care of again. Hartford hometown Christmas, not necessarily in November, but it's recent here. Good turnout, no law enforcement issues there. And then, I have some news. I accepted the civil deputy position with the sheriff's office, so I'll be making that change, a new adventure here, January fourteenth. So, I'm excited to get all new knowledge and experience in another part of the department, but I'll be sad to be leaving Hartford, been in Hartford for almost four and a half years now, so. Just wanted to thank you guys for the opportunity to serve the community of Hartford out here and wish you guys the best, and I just want to let you guys know that, so.
What is the civil deputy, what is that?
So it's the civil division, so they manage the protection orders, executions, judgments, liens, evictions. Pretty much all the civil paperwork, and it'll be a bunch of certified civil process servers that I'll help manage as well, so I'll try and get some supervisor experience as well, so.
I'll send some work your way.
Yeah. That's good, that's my choice.
Well, hey, you.
Yeah.
Absolutely. You said that's good. I started January.
January fourteenth, and then also on here, you know, the new deputy will be champion board. Don't quote me on this, I, I believe she was a trooper out West River for seven, eight years, and then she's been with us for about two. She's on nights right now, and then she'll be coming to days. The shift change is January fourteenth, which is a Saturday. So I would assume that she would start that next Monday, depending on how those hours double out with the twelve-hour shifts, with that shift ending and then the new shift, with the new pay period. So I would assume that Monday is when she would start, after the fourteenth, and then I'll have her attend the January third meeting, the next meeting that I attend as well, have her introduce herself and so you guys can get to know her too, so. And then I'll have her riding along with me one afternoon, kind of introduce her, keep her around town, and kind of fill her in on how, you know, dealing with the parking tickets and how we address all the city ordinances and stuff, so.
Okay.
Any questions, comments, concerns with all or anything?
Congratulations.
Hey, thank you, I appreciate it.
Congratulations. No admission.
Yeah. Miss Casey, thank you.
And thank you.
Absolutely, thanks.
And, very important, of course.
Good evening, mayor, councilors. Been a little while since I've been here, so I'm a little bit catching up here. I'll try and keep it very brief. October, had twenty total calls, thirteen in Hartford. November, twenty-one total calls, eight within Hartford. Some of the training we've done, October, we had pediatrics and emergency vehicle operation, along with the state EMS conference where we had eight members attend and give sixteen hours of continuing education. On November, we had airway and radio communications training. Training's coming up in December, we have training on trauma and ice rescue also. Along with that, with winter coming, you know, we responded to two house fires in the last thirty days here. Just want to encourage the citizens of Hartford to keep the fire hydrants clean and clear and make sure they all have working smoke and CO2 detectors in their house, so. All right, that's all I have.
Did we have any folks help follow the joint with them there on Friday?
We did not, I had anybody in there. We were on standby, Sioux Falls was fully staffed, they had called in all of their off-duty personnel. Had there been any other situations arise in Sioux Falls, they would have been calling in outside agencies at that point.
All right, any questions?
All right. Thank you, chief.
All right, thank you. Mr. Fonker, Chamber of Economy Development report?
Good evening, good evening, thank you for having me here so I can talk. First off, do you have any questions for me that are on your mind? Not yet. Not yet.
Yeah, I see what you say.
Bring yourself to a hole first.
Well, in the GIBRATI senior meeting on November seventh, we, we had about sixty people in attendance in American Legion. We ran out of, ran out of the main entree, which was a really good sign. We heard positive feedback from most people there, and actually, all the people there, I haven't heard any negative feedback. So I think that's, that's a good thing. We elected five members to our board, Sherry Goh, Jacob Kohlander, Victoria Obenauer, Todd Lovinow, and Dr. Kim Yngst. Shortly after, we had the AGDC follow-up members meeting that Wednesday. We had about twenty-six people present, and we presented our housing study, and thank you for, thank you, host, that you made it that evening, we appreciate your, your attendance. Community guys, we've been putting together for Hartford by the Chamber. Our chamber president, Matt Riley, will talk to you about that later on in the agenda tonight. We have two of the events. Friday, we have ribbon cutting for Dottie Gnome at eleven-thirty at their location, followed by their grand opening, with their opening at noon. And then Friday evening, the Chamber of Events Holiday Mixer at five-thirty PM at the South Bar. You're invited to attend both events, we will have you there. Last week, we had the ribbon cutting for the Jones Family Eye Care. I think it was a great success. They had finger food for attendees, and we did a fiftile ceremony, and people stood around for about a good hour, hour after the fact. I will be attending the Makita Retreat tomorrow, where they will be reviewing the conversations that took place over the last few months regarding the future of Akita Makita and the regional planning. We have a six-hour all-day retreat tomorrow at the New Event Center down in Harrisburg. It's a little, a little barn, it's on the apple orchard there. Beautiful venue, I was there for Shelly Cook off a while back, and looking forward to be down there. Friday morning, be attending the governor's budget address, that's being put on about the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce. It's kind of a part mixer, part. Area for people who can get out of there and listen to governors, plans and asking questions. Any questions? I was hoping it would appear last week to go to the South Dakota Chamber and Aviatoric Companies, or it's the SDCEDC. They're with, they're part of the, they're a division of the South Dakota Chamber. They do their, they do a semi-ending meeting, one in winter, one in summer. Just about different trends are happening in marketplace and different things that are affecting Chamber account development directors. Kind of a little bit of training as well, but I got to about the exit to, I think it was Camistota, I think about forty minutes. I had to enter around that point, so.
Yeah.
Disappointing, but there are other train opportunities in the future. We have two members of the Chamber, we had actually the last few days, Auto Glass and Big D Tech Solutions. I think it's, is it Advanced Auto Glass, I believe?
It's Auto Glass Express.
Auto Glass Express, there you go, thank you. I didn't have the full name written down here. And I believe you have four other members that have, that have expressed interest, but not on the website yet.
Right.
Oh crap.
I'm just going to comment real quick, like on, on, on the website, if I could. I was able to utilize, or we, the group that you have in front of you, the propaganda, as our co-own pointed out, did, and it's a nice to have event and avenue of, of, an opportunity to promote your events, being a member of Chamber of Commerce. And, and so what you have in front of you is also on the Chamber website, since we're, since we're a member. I commend that application, Vince and Jesse, because it's, it's tough for nonprofit organizations to be able to get their word out, and that's a great, great avenue, great option, great opportunity for, for us to help, help these, you know, other groups around, you know, and, and, you know, pool committee, park and rec, you know, I mean, you know, bug the heck out of them, I guess. out of them, I guess, I mean, if they want to, but it worked well, Jesse, you did a great job responding in regards to that, and I just want to appreciate you having that happen.
Thank you, we're glad you use the website as well, because if our members don't use it, then there's no point in having it.
Exactly, yeah.
There's little point in it, guys. Chamber breakfast on Sunday, probably served close to two hundred people, ran out of, tossed links just in time.
You know, uptick in RFIs, not after the elections, really.
I haven't submitted, I've submitted things since our, when we submitted the five six special factor.
And so I'm just going to jump over to the Chamber, get your board, new board set in place, is, just forgive me, just for, I'm just going to ask, Vince, have you gone for how many years president of the Chamber?
The election for the officers is next Tuesday night.
Next Tuesday night, okay. And I am... Does the board decide to make that decision?
The board, the board makes that. The twenty seventeen board directors votes for that.
Gotcha, okay, okay. And you're willing to do it for another year?
Yeah, I've been nominated, except for the nomination.
At this point, it's a still nominee, so. Let me talk for a minute. Good. Great, that's all.
I have any questions?
Oh, fine, somebody else.
Yeah, I'm here, Matt.
Fix some trees.
Yeah. All right. Mitch, with the city engineer report?
Starting off with the Mike Trail, we have all our documents off the DOT for that project, so they'll be taking them and getting those up to bid, it'll take a couple months for them to probably get that bid in place, but as far as we're concerned, they should have everything they need to go forward with that project. So we'll wait and see what questions they have on, and any comments and those sorts of things. Nicholson Road, we've had, we've been meeting with, you know, we talked to the Roy Scunfey, I see that's on the agenda later on, so I'll just save that discussion for them, but we've been participating in those discussions. The North Main Street as well, I see that's on, on the two. Waste water study, we're still on hold on that until we get further along with Nicholson Road, so once we have kind of the scope figured out on Nicholson Road, that sewer study will kind of fall into place with that. Force account work, we've completed the sports complex, man, and Shelly sent final drawings up to that group last week or the week before. The bike trail signage, our landscape architect just sent that off today, so that should be complete, or for commenting, we might have some comments back on that. Still been looking at some GIS updates, reviewed the platform for Olic's second edition. Southman Edition Amendment Review, that was just a little site plan that we had reviewed. And then, what was it, Crestwood Edition Plant Review was the, that's on the agenda here too, I think.
All kinds of things come up.
Yeah.
Anything else you want to question?
I'd like to publicly thank Stockwell Engineering for, is the word paying for or subsidizing appropriate for the Christmas event last Thursday? Because I had my, I had my wine here a beer, and I had this all.
Yeah, yeah, no, we're happy to do that.
So, paying for, whatever the word is, there, I'd like to publicly thank them.
You're welcome.
I agree.
All right, I'll always look more from you later then.
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Mitch. Craig?
Streets, we've been working on the gravel roads, we're probably pretty much kind of familiar unless we bring some gravel in and do some pot oil filling or stuff like that, the waiting's going to be, looks like it's going to be wrapped up for the year. All the equipment is in good shape, everything's ready for snow one removal, and winter, I guess, in general. We will be hauling some salt sand and some straight salt here this week and get that put away. Still got some budget money left from this year's budget, so I get that taken care of, get the stock pile up. Christmas lights, all been put up and done, now we got everything wrapped up for, everything set up and wrapped up again for hometown Christmas, or for you to keep moving ahead with other, other work that we have going on. Pressure washer, one to shop, finally decided to be non-fixable, heating coils completely out of it, just rotted away, it's been, we've had it about twenty years, so it's about time for it to go, so we'll be looking at getting one and see where I'm at for budgets this year, have to see if I can get one purchased this year. I did get a contact from Wes with the city of Sioux Falls here just the other day, they're getting very stark, they're a street project, so I'll get, contact them so we can get on their bid process with them again this year. Water and sewer, we have finished up discharging both ponds, number two and three, we did move the water from one to two, grabbed a sample this year last, or a couple days ago, pH is too high at this time, but we'll check it again here later this week, and then again next week, if we get down there, it works. Within range, we'll grab some other samples and see if we can discharge. The flows are looking just identical to the way they were last fall, we have a wet, wet fall, we're going to have wet spring, so there's much water, we can get rid of it better off we are, so. Well, if we don't get rid of it, we're still over fifty percent more capacity than we had last year, just one hundred percent capacity this year, so we're in good shape. Park and pool, parks all been completely wrapped up, except for we got to cover the skateboard park yet, we got that taken care of, we were going to do it today, but with the wind, we just said, there's got to be a better day for that. Ice rink, with the way this weather's looking, not getting above freezing for a few days, or for a couple weeks, that kind of looks, we'll be getting that filled up and ready to go too, so I'll have it, hopefully by Christmas break, so they'll utilize it. Like Mitch said, we've been working with Sports Complex, we've got the spot picked out, they asked me to bring it up to you guys about if we would be able to start hauling some dirt in there on that site, they're going to come to you guys later, probably next meeting or something like that about the building, but we were wondering since this time of year, if we've always got truck available to haul with, so we're, we'd like to go ahead and start hauling some dirt in there, I'll get the layout from Mitch, he gets some elevations, I think we pretty much got that all established anyway, so I'd like to go ahead and start hauling some fill in there, getting that, get a jump on it for them in the spring, I guess, so, if you guys still have a problem with that.
Where are you getting, where are you getting the fill from?
We've got a pile, some piled on here, plus there is some on at the backside of Sports Complex that Central States, when they put their dish on, they had a bunch of dirt, wasn't real good black dirt, more just filterd, and they asked us if we wanted, I said, you have stock pile it over there, so it's kind of hidden back down the hill at Sports Complex, so we should have plenty to do this year, so.
Do you need a motion on that?
I'd just soon get a motion.
I'd like a motion that we allow the city to start allowing build dirt, or for the sports complex building.
All right, discussion?
Do we, do we have a square footage on the building figured out yet?
It's pretty much the same size as what they had it, maintenance side.
The first or the second?
Trying to pick which one it was. Eighty by fifty, yeah. It's still, they're, they're still looking at putting batting cages and stuff like that in it, so it's not just a maintenance shed, it's, maintenance side was thirty by...
I, I'm, I'm just curious about when you're bringing fill in, if you're going to be spreading that fill out a hundred yards, or if you're going to be spreading that fill out thirty yards?
It's going to be a ways to get it filled and tapered, plus the building, I got to put, we got to bring, where it's going to be sitting, we're pushing it back where we, where we would feel comfortable with it at, it's not up front like they were wanting it before, so we do have to put a road in there yet too, to get back to where we...
But in the event that building's not that big, is that going to be a waste of fill or not? That's what I'm getting at.
I'm pretty sure it's going to be that size, the way, the way they, I mean, if, if you guys, if you guys are okay with it.
You're pretty sure that building's going to be that size?
If you guys are okay with that size. The sports complex, that's the size they would like to go with, so.
I don't know, I didn't know who you had a meeting with.
I don't, I don't see the sports complex.
Apparently you know something I don't know.
I don't see the sports complex. They can help him, so. And if they, if it does get shrunk down, we can always reclaim it.
How soon are we going to have that conversation?
I thought they were going to, next meeting or the meeting after, I think is what they're hoping for, they wanted to get...
For the time being, can you just dump it there and not spread it?
Yeah, well, we could start where the beginning of it's going to be, and get it, you know, get the road pushed in there, and we'd throw some in the top part there and just kind of hold back, or stockpile there, push it all later too.
I just hate for you guys to do a bunch of work and then do a bunch of overfilling.
You know. And I was just curious, I don't want to get off, well, we're talking about fill right now, so I'm not going to get off on that tangent, I guess, but can you reread the motion for us?
Sure, Nelson moves to allow the city to start putting silver for this sports complex building, that could be my mind.
All right, so that doesn't say spread it out, so I think we're okay there, I mean, it's okay to bring it, but not spread it.
Yeah, I just assume, I just assume not spread it out until we figure out.
There's a discussion we had there, I'm, I'm not saying it's, I just won't hear it out.
Because I didn't go to meet Craig like you, so.
What a, what a logical person to assume that even if that building isn't as big as they're proposing, that area would still need to be filled for the, just, just to get it out.
Yes.
Just to get it, just to look it up to grade, so you can actually utilize it.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was getting at, I mean, if we're going to fill it, then let's fill it, but if, I mean, if we're just filling it to put a building on it, then we need to figure out how big the building is.
That area as proposed would need to be filled regardless.
Yes, regardless, yeah, I would sure say so.
And do you run into issues finding filled dirt, like if you're using all this up for that, and it's going to take, I mean, are you...
Lately, we haven't had, we've been turning some dirt away actually, because, because we've been no place to stockpile it or put it anymore, like I said, we, that, a lot of that, that Central States took out, we got all that, they brought it over and scraped it up and dumped it over there for us, so that's all free dirt that we got.
Free dirt, that's a lot to be more on.
All right, we'll call motion, or call the, call vote. My name?
Yeah.
Yeah. Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
And the other thing on mine, I've been nominated back on the Street Association for the state of South Dakota, board member now, I'll work my way through as a board member, then eventually up to president of the association again, so I do have a meeting on the fourteenth. Since all the members are on this side of the state, we usually wouldn't, used to meet before when I was on the board, we used to meet in Pierre, but since everybody's on the east side of the state this year, we're going to meet in Mitchell, and I will be riding up with Mark Con or two, so we'll be having some conversations between Sioux Falls and Hartford, we can just keep working together, so.
Awesome, yeah. Congratulations, Jeff.
Yeah, so, thank you. And the only other thing I'd like to say is, I'd just like to thank all the council for the card, the other night of Christmas party, so, it's very appreciated, thanks. That's all I got.
I have a question. Or we're done, Craig. You mentioned the samples going to Sioux Falls test for pH and...
The pH we do ourselves.
You do the pH yourself? What, what do you go to Sioux Falls for, ammonia?
Ammonia, TSS, and BODs.
So, just out of curiosity, are, are there tests that we can do in Hartford that, that aren't state certified, but that would give you an idea?
Yeah, you can, we used to do our own TSSs, it's, I mean, not real accurate, BODs, it's been a long time since we done them, their equipment we've got's pretty obsolete, I wouldn't count on it, or even be close to being accurate, there is some equipment out there that is more modern, or we can, I can certainly look into and see what it costs to do our own sampling.
Well, I'm just curious, because I assume that regardless of who runs it in, I mean, you're looking at at least, at least two hours.
It's about an hour round trip, it's right there in Max, or, well, the old AET now or whatever, right down on Benson and, trying to think where it is, just off of Minnesota Avenue on the north side, just downtown here. It takes about, about an hour to run, to run it.
I'm just curious what it would cost to do, to do our own testing.
I can look into it, I know the equipment we've got is so outdated, because that was back when we had the actual plant, which was twenty years ago, about, you know, four minutes, because we actually...
I mean, I don't know how often you get tested.
Uh, like right now, probably, if our pH comes in, I'll grab one test, bring it in to see if it passes, if that one passes, I'll usually, if it, if it passes by a wide margin, then I just go ahead and dump, we don't have to notify DNR or anything like that, we can just discharge whenever we're ready. When we discharge, we have to have three samples the first week, and then one sample every week after that, so if we, during a discharge, if we just dump one pond, we're grabbing about four to five samples. If we, like, when I did both ponds together, I just did a continuous discharge, so I only had to do initial three, and then one every week after that, so we probably total ten to fifteen samples a year we run in.
But you can, but you can discharge on pH alone?
No, I, but if my pH is good, I, then I'll take a sample in.
Then I'll take a sample in, and the rest to test it.
For operations, you have all, and then if that one comes back where I feel comfortable discharging, then we go ahead and discharge, right, so.
Spin off from Mark's question, I, forgive me if I'm speaking incorrectly here, Neil certified for...
He's got all the certifications that he needs right now for Hartford, he's got, yeah, he's got, yeah, he's got his class two in water distribution, wastewater treatment, and wastewater collection, I believe it is. Jesse's got, he's got a class two in water distribution, and wastewater treatment and wastewater collection, he's got his class one, he has taken a test next, well, this Thursday, he's going to Huron to take a test on wastewater collection, I believe it is or something, and then he's signed up to go to wastewater treatment class out in Rapid City, and that's the only wastewater treatment class that's, has any training with it, with the test along with it, for right now, the next six months or a year or so.
So, so my, my secondary question to that then is, namely targeting Neil, since he's kind of run the course now, any hands-on training with Neil when you do these tastings, or...
Oh yeah, we've all went out and grabbed samples and done the pH, and Jesse's done it all, we've all, yeah.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Yep, everybody's pretty much rounded in everything that we needed, yes.
All right, thank you.
With that, we'll move to the city finance officer report, Bob.
Okay, the report I gave you, just at the top, has kind of a summary of some of the money that we received in November, and then I also included in that box the cash balances and revenue and expenses through the end of October, and then I also included the calendar of events, I was also at a training today, and then preparing for year-end financial stuff, so I was in a class today and learning about how to put that all together, so.
How was it?
It was good.
It was good?
Yeah, so, now I have to do everyone's W2s.
So, she'll be busy at the end of the year with accounts payable and payroll, and the general ledger, there's a lot of reports due, a lot of things to close out, a lot of things to send to the state, so it's a, it's a community tour, so.
Yeah.
Busy at the end of the month.
So, any questions?
Well, when it comes to events, isn't there, is there HADC meeting every Friday morning?
Uh, I guess there is, would you like me doing a few of that?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Except this Friday.
Except this Friday. Is Thursday said, okay.
It's pretty much every Friday, if you show up and not here, and...
It was another day.
Another, the next Friday.
Yeah, we serve it, we show up on Friday.
It's the next Friday. I've never shown up and not had a view.
I'm not here, I'm heading out at the latest all day. This Friday morning. Oh, this Friday morning.
What time is that, is that seven?
Seven thirty, here at City Hall, yep, but I will, I will add that in there for you.
Thank you. You have planned as many meetings on there, we, we have in our packet, I just wanted to point out that it granted another variance for a fence and a drainage unit, just in case you didn't see that.
Yeah.
So according to what the governor said today, sales tax revenue was down, so I'm assuming our sales tax revenue is...
We're actually, so far, we're running a little headspace, so.
Oh yeah, we're on the right road.
We're on the right road.
Yeah.
Is there another one that I missed?
Oh, no, anyway, man.
I was missing something, I didn't know where it was.
Blood, sweat, tears, went into that whole thing. Mostly tears.
So I can eat some more.
Yes.
I'm gonna need some adhesive now.
Alright, any questions for honor?
Mister at the Crestwood Bar.
Yeah. I agree, that was fun, thanks for doing all this planning that you did for that.
Good game.
Even though you couldn't be there.
Yep, careful what you say.
Good game, good game, move on.
Yeah.
The silent listens, huh?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Alright, perfect, thank you, alright. City administrator, please say.
Okay, just a few updates, um planning and zoning, uh as you know, they've been working on updating the city's building codes. Um, I presented the ordinances to them at their last meeting, they're reviewing them, they'll probably be presented to you guys in January, just cause they're a little bit lengthy and we have a couple full agendas. So they're gonna look at it this month, so it's presented to you in January. Um, and also Jesse alluded to this, but we are starting to talk about joint jurisdictions, um since this came up with the city of Sioux Falls, we talked about whether. We wanna look at that again, currently the city has platting jurisdiction with the county, but we don't have any joint jurisdiction, so. I know for Scott and Mark, we talked about this about three years ago, never established it at that time, it, it is a process, but um. Now that we have a, a new members of the P and Z board and the council, I think it's something maybe, and as we grow, it's something we maybe need to look at again, so. They'll be talking about it a little bit and having a recommendation coming over the council shortly also. Um, Mitch alluded to this, and in your packet, there is a plat in the Crestwood addition, it's this plat here. Basically, they have presented that to the city, the uh bold highlighted portions are basically the wetland areas, the drainage areas through their development. They planted those off, cause their end goal is they would like to flat those and eventually deed them to the city for the city to maintain and take care of, cause they don't wanna take care of them. Um, Western Mills has done this, that's usually what happens with wetland area, developers will flat that off, turn it over to the city, so then. In the future, the city can maintain and take care of them, cause as we all know, land changes, people pass it on, and this way the city can always maintain them for the residents that live around it. The plat came to us, the plat's in good order and form, um so you know, nothing really. Where we can't approve the plat, but I wanted to have just some discussion before we actually approve maybe beading the land over to us. Me and Mitch talked a little bit about it, that is a drainage area there, no maintenance has really been done on it before we accept the property. Does the council maybe wanna put some stipulations on that, maybe have the home, or the property owner dredge that property beforehand and then turn it over to us in, in good shape and form? Um, there's also another thing, and I don't think I put this in my report, we were thinking about later, me and Craig were talking about it, but um. This little part to the north, these two lots are, have houses on them already, there's nothing in this drainage area. But there is a sidewalk here, and there's a sidewalk on the properties, nothing to connect them. Do we wanna make the property owner put in that sidewalk before the city accepts it? Cause once we accept it, we'll have to put it in, so. Um, or do we just want to accept it and the city go in and take care of it, so. Before, I, you know, don't have anything formal, Jen, I just wanted to get some consensus from the council, your thoughts on, like I said, before we accept the property. Maybe I should have some more discussions with Crestwood of what the city would like to see from them.
So there's two sidewalks, one on the east and one on the west that are missing?
Yep, yep, exactly.
How, how are they missing in the new development if the houses are there?
Okay, so the houses are here, and those sidewalks are in because the property owners put it, but where the drainage areas is, there's no sidewalk there, and you know, the sidewalk runs out on Madison, so.
Oh yeah, I think at a minimum, the sidewalks need to be in.
Well, and I'm gonna go with a little bit of a history lesson here, uh is uh Mark may remember, um in regards to the Crestwinds. Um, with East Island Trail, uh they donated roughly the, the estimated value, I think, was at that time twenty thousand dollars. Uh, for the land to make East Island Trail possible. Um, while I agree that definitely the sidewalks are gonna have to be put in, so I know exactly what we're talking about, cause I stood there with the, the uh water issue with uh. Mister Peterson on, on a couple occasions, um I, I'm gonna ask the council uh to um, to take that into consideration. Uh, in regards to the estimated, Craig, uh take, give me a ballpark, uh if you could, probably twenty feet of sidewalk. Is that, that, that about ten feet each?
No, it's probably, oh no, it's more than ten.
Hundred and ten feet.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five on one and fifty-four.
Fifty-five, hundred and ten feet.
On Creston Trail, on both east and the east and the west side.
Yes.
It is, oh yeah, see it right there, fifty-five feet, okay.
It's a sidewalk.
The sidewalk is actually probably the cheaper part of this, of taking this over, the drainage area itself's kind of a mess right now.
Well, they have it done.
We've had complaints on it, and we've just told the, go talk to.
Right.
So, I mean, there's trees growing in there, and we've got some other ones that we're probably gonna get, try to get people to dump on us too, and I, I feel. My personal feeling is if we're gonna take, accept them, we should have worked it right before we take them. So that we don't have to go in there, try and clean them all and get them taken care of.
So, so give me a ballpark, figuring a hundred and ten feet of guy above the sidewalk, I, I won't quote. Just rough, you don't have to get precise on it. So I know I'm not speaking out of turn.
Four bucks a foot.
Yeah, I'm just saying, about four, five bucks a foot, so.
Okay.
While you're looking at that, Craig, is it, is it, do you see other municipalities, it's been common practice, I understand why we take over some of the wet areas to keep them maintained. But is that, you typically see that, is that, is that just been a Hartford thing, or is that been a?
I think it's kind of a city, most cities do it, because if they would decide to, once they get the development done and they decide to move, they're just gonna leave to the city anyway. I mean, it's gonna be one of those things, so this way, this way we can try and get it under control before something like that would happen, and then it's just a matter of maintaining it.
Inevitably, you end up with a drainage unit there handling for those things, and this actually probably gives you better leverage for the fences and drainage units, you own the land now rather than.
Sure.
It being an amusement.
There's already friends and fences on some of those houses, I bet.
Yeah, they're not, well, this, they wouldn't be on this here yet, because this is all private property, this is all my Crestman's addition.
Still, so it doesn't matter, so if there's a fence there.
It's gonna be on the person's.
Doesn't matter, or?
It'll be on private, their, their person's private property, so it wouldn't be in the sewer drainage area, or the sweat area. I know we don't really like seeing all these, because it is extra work for us to take and get them cleaned out now, but like you said, it's pretty much, you're gonna end up with it, so.
And, and maintenance, you know, the people that live along it, a lot of times get confused by that word, cause that, to them, that could mean mowing, that could mean, you know, simple things like that, but maintenance usually is dredging. You know, I think it's full of sediment, you know, that, and that would be it, the city's responsible to clear that out and, and clean it up, so that the water can flow, but as far as mowing and that sort. You wouldn't be taking that.
No, no, it'd be basically uh probably cactails back in there for the most part, because there's not a lot of water, there's water that comes through, but it's not like an actual river that runs through it, so I mean. You, you're now, wet, wet, wet grass growing in there and stuff like that, it ain't gonna be something there to be able to go in and mold, you know, really, by the way, so.
And like Craig said, you know, it's, you know, currently, you know, the Crestman's own this, we have got complaints from those property owners along there, there's nothing we can do, we, if we don't own the land, we can't go in and, and dredge it or take care of it. Um, so you know, we say, we'll get a hold of them, and I believe usually the property owners don't do anything, so then you got a situation where you've got a citizen that's having, you know, water backup on their property, cause they're not taking care of it, and there's really nothing the city can do about it, you know?
Sure.
Craig, did you get an estimate of what it would take to clean that up?
I can look into it, I haven't done anything with it, I, I haven't even been back in there, even see how many trees are back in there, what needs to come out, and what needs to be cleaned up.
Just weigh in the cost of the sidewalk, the cost of taping that up.
I think there's.
They might have, you know, them giving the land for East Island Trail, you know, maybe there's a happy background.
I mean, the sidewalk's a cheap easy, that's a cheap easy part of it all.
Yeah, if they tape it up, I'd be more inclined to take it and move the sidewalk.
Yeah, we, we've done sidewalk work before, so we can, you know, but that's what you guys decide to do, that's what we're gonna do.
Ideally, though, you'd like to see them dredge and clean it out.
I'd like to see it cleaned before, just like uh, like you said on Saltman, we're gonna have that one back there, and that one's kind of a mess back there too, and we just keep, right now, we just tell them, well, you have to get ahold of developer and have them take care of it, because we don't have enough, it's not ours. It's not a drain achievement, so at this time, and, so we're. It's kind of like a street or a development, before you take it over, you wanna have things done right and ready to go, so you ain't spend a lot of money until, you know.
Well, if we let somebody just give us this one this way, then this person will give us this one this way.
I prefer to have it, maybe you just keep going.
Have it ready to go, and we'll take it down from there to be the precedent, I understand the twenty thou, the, the land piece, and I would take that into account as well, but I. I don't think that gives you enough direction during this next discussion with them, but, or Craig can come and proceed.
Like I say, I, I think maybe at this point then, um Craig, maybe go take a look at it, see what work needs to be done, and maybe kind of get a process, and then we can approach Crestwinds about, you know. Before, you know, the plat's fine, but before we take over the land, um we would like you to bring this up to, you know, these standards and whatnot, whatever he comes up with. And see what they say from there.
And report back, yes, exactly, see how that.
Yeah.
So the other two pieces you're missing are a deed, you're gonna wanna get a deed from these folks, and you're gonna wanna get a title insurance policy proving they own it, so those are the other two pieces.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, okay, yeah, thank you.
So, yeah, I think I really need this direction now, that's, that's what I wanted to know, if we wanted to put some stipulations on it, so I can go talk with them and go from there, so. Okay, that's good, move forward with that, um the other thing I wanted to bring up for the city council. Um, has to do with FEMA and the floodway that we have done, we have a little issue going on in town, and I just wanna make you aware of it, if any citizens ask you about it or whatnot, but you know. Essentially, we have this flood plain with, throughout the city, and earlier this spring, we employed our engineers to designate where the floodway is, so. Which is a narrower strip along there, you can build in the flood plain, you know, if you bring in enough field and bring it above the base flood elevation, but that floodway, there's absolutely no building whatsoever in it, so. We need to know where that floodway was in order that we, you know, don't let any activity happen in there, you know, break any laws. So we had them identify that, but during that process, unbeknownst to us, is that when they identified this floodway, this narrower strip. Any loamars that were done, or loamas, which were basically any property that filed paperwork with FEMA asking to get their structure out of the flood plain, because they built it up and they were above there. Any of those that FEMA approved earlier were basically voided, and no, they um basically threw them back into the flood plain. Now, identifying this floodway didn't change where the structure was, and it's still above the base flood elevation, so the structures are okay, but because of this. Little trigger that we had done with the floodway, they threw them back into the flood plain, it's, where, where the situation now, we gotta hold the FEMA, and basically what we needed to do. We had to submit a letter to FEMA again saying, these properties were previously thrown out, uh or were taken out of the flood plain, you know, we did this floodway, we'd like them taken out again. And we did that, Stockwell submitted that last week to them, we submitted them directly to Tom Burney or contacted FEMA in Denver, he said, put all the properties on one letter, get it to me, and I'll get them reinstated, so. Um, I'm hoping it won't take real long, uh we had this issue with the fire station, it was about a month, they pushed it through kind of pretty fast, so. I'm hoping they'll get it pushed through, but if you hear any properties, the problem is that, and, and we do have one of the property homeowner, they're, they're refinancing, and so. When they refinance, that triggered their bank to look at the flood plain, well, now it's showing it's in the flood plain, and they go, well, we're not on the flood plain, we have the certificate and triggered it, so. I, I, I've given them, I've given them copies of the letter we sent explaining the situation, and they're taking that to the bank, so hopefully that, they'll accept that, but. I don't know if any other situations will happen, but I just wanna make you guys aware of that, and we're aware of it, we're working on it, hopefully we'll get resolved here by the end of the month.
Well, I remember when that happened, and, and we went through that protocol, um so are you saying that once it gets back from Denver, that it henceforth, it, it's out of the flood plain, or it can just happen again?
Well, it can happen again, if someone were to come back and revise that, that, they call it a panel that FEMA has for that area. Or revise that boundary in any way, it, it throws out the whole, the whole works, never has a reset, so, it's usually a quick process to reset it. You know, there's, there's not a lot of work, but that's just.
This is the first time it's happened to us, so we need to be cognizant of that, the way forward, yeah.
Chances are it won't happen again in this area, cause I mean, I don't know why anybody would be doing any type of big loamars in there, but you never know.
Except for the city, yeah.
Okay, sure.
But, yeah, we're aware of that now, so. And then just wanna make you aware, I got notice from the, the county sheriff's department that uh the monthly reports that we get showing their call log, because of Marcy's law, we know, no longer will we receive those, they. Now that may change, there's, I've heard some more stuff on the news now that Jack Lee has changed some of that, so maybe we will get them in the future, but as of now, that's why you don't have one this month in your packet, so.
Sure.
And that's all I got.
Some good things to discuss? Alright, next we'll move on to the whole business, and it's been six months since our last appointment for city attorney, and uh we spent a. Bunch of time going over this, we've also, you know, brought in some attorneys from different areas, spent some time interviewing the public, getting an idea, getting a feel for what they're, how things work, I know I've spent some time. Discussing this with the council in the off time, all of that, and um to get us back to May of two thousand seventeen, so we're back on a regular schedule again for appointments. Um, tonight I'd like to appoint Freeburg Nelson and ask Mister Larry Nelson to fill that term and be our city attorney until May of two thousand seventeen. So with that, I'll be looking for council approval of that appointment.
So, vote.
I'll say it, though.
Any discussion?
Forgive me if I'm wrong, but didn't we have a discussion last May or June about moving those appointments?
We, we did, and that's kind of where I was going is, is.
You know, moving them back so that.
Moving to the second meeting versus the first meeting.
Well, so just so that a new council wouldn't come in.
No, that's right.
We, we did have that conversation where.
I thought we were talking about moving the appointments back till December, January.
You reappoint for a year from now, would, would any new council, give them a buffer?
To give, to give, just so if there was a change, you had the six-month transition instead of new council, new appointments.
New engineers, new everybody.
I, I think we just had it uh to where, where we would.
And we were.
Spread it out.
I can't remember if we did anything.
I don't think we ever did anything, cause I think in our ordinance, it says we appoint them at this date, so we have to do a change in our ordinance to actually change the date of what it is, whatever you guys decide.
But we can look at that later, I was just.
Yeah.
No, but I think that's a good, you know, so for instance, we made those, we made.
You can do it.
Other appointments for um, for a year at that point, we made this one for six months, and um. But I remember having that discussion, I think you must have hit it right there, but I'm, I'm in favor of continuing that discussion, because I think it gives more continuity to. Our council and all of our services, you know, whether it's engineering, legal, anything, you have a little bit of overlap that way. It's helped us, I mean, I mean, in this situation, obviously, it's helped us to have that overlap.
That's probably because of the personnel that steer the boat.
It was a wise move, it was a wise move, wasn't it?
No, I just, I remember having the conversation back then, but I couldn't remember how we left it.
It's just, it's very scary to think that you could come in, what was it, May, that we, we started with five new folks. And was it the second? It would, it was, cause you, you ran, you ran the meeting for one meeting, was it the very next meeting? It was the very next meeting that we made the appointments. That, that we could have changed everything that's how this city worked with five new appointments.
And I definitely think.
That, that is scary.
We need to look at push that to November, December, January, something like that.
Whether we, whether we spread them out, whether we change this.
I think you need to build in a buffer.
I think you need to build in a buffer, away from the elections to be changed a little bit, so.
Even if it's ninety days.
Is there anything else that puts us outside of this ordinance? We'll ask legal on this. Is there anything that puts us outside of this ordinance on this appointment, for instance, now? Or the appointment previously to six months, previously?
I think if you go back and change your ordinance and do those date things, I just think what you do is, is I would just reappoint for that new time period, however you want. If it's gonna be shorter, just amend it if it's gonna be longer, do it longer, if that's your question.
Well, my question is, is because our ordinance, I haven't read it recently especially, but if our ordinance says that we make these appointments, what is it, the first meeting after the new council, or in May, or something like that, does...
And for one year.
Is there any, and for one year? So were we outside of our ordinance with that six-month appointment? And are we outside of it again with this six-month appointment? I just answered that.
I think it just says appointments in May.
It just says more appointments will be made, yeah.
At the second, second meeting in May.
Doesn't dictate timelines or...
Because see, when, when that, but when that ordinance was written, the mayor appointed the city administrator, city finance, city superintendent, the attorney, and the engineer, those five appointments were made the same meeting in May.
Newspaper.
Yeah, newspaper, banks.
Yeah, all appointments were done the same meeting in May. Yeah, and just, and it didn't specify the timeline for whatnot, it just says that. So, anyway, so like I said, I think you can revise your ordinance to, if you want to move the appointments to October, November, whatever, we can just done something.
I think, I think we, we vote on what we have on the table right now, like what you're saying, and we revisit this.
We revisit it?
We bring it up, we, and I don't know if next agenda's the right one to do it, because we've got all that other stuff going on, but, you know, January would be a good time, February would be a good time to go over that.
Let's see that in agenda.
Sounds good. All right, any more discussion? All right, without a call vote, Monahan.
You can call me first, all the way home.
No, you called Nelson a couple times.
I did it first.
Monahan. Nelson.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
And more.
We didn't mix it up.
Yes, it's the first time we mixed it up. Really, yeah. If I didn't like it personally, ever again. All right, thank you, thank you, Larry. Okay. With that, we've got Vince up with the community guide.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. The chamber has decided to take out a fairly large project, and what we're gonna do is create a comprehensive community guide that showcases all the different positive attributes of Hartford. We do have it, we have our budget forecasted for 2017 already, which we presented to you earlier. We asked for no additional funds at that time, other than the carnival, and possibly for the Halloween event that may grow as time goes on. We are gonna undertake this task, whether you want to participate or not, okay? Because we think it's something very positive that we could help promote Hartford in doing so. It's gonna cost roughly $5,000 to do this project. We can do it within our budget if we do not print a spring newsletter. Would really prefer not to do that, because the community really likes that newsletter to find out what's going on in the community of Hartford. Not only do we talk about businesses, but we talk about a lot of different things going on in the community when we do that. It's very well received. So I'm here tonight to ask you if you want to partner in that project and finance part, or even all of the project. Don't need a decision tonight, but it's something that we are gonna undertake. We'll figure out the funding to do it. Again, next Tuesday night, I'll find out if I'll be president again for next year. The second piece of that is I'm gonna ask the council and Teresa if we can use Jesse as the point person for this project. Any questions?
Tell us.
Go ahead.
Give me a little more on the community guide. Yeah, that's what I was wanting to get at.
On the community guide, we're gonna showcase the school system, the park system, the different shopping that's available in Hartford, the different businesses around, just all the positive attributes that we can for the community. We'd like to mail a copy to all of our residents, first and foremost, to get them to understand all the things that are available in the community. It could be used at different events around the state where Hartford, we have a position to set up a table to showcase the community. I can, just me, I could envision the realtors wanting to sell homes, having an open house, and just having a community guide sitting there, that could be that one thing that brings a new family to the community. So, and we want to make it really timeless. We'll do it not, I don't know, every year, but maybe every two years, but put events in there that don't have a specific date tied to them. And we just did Home Down Christmas, so we could put the first Sunday of December. We could put the, the Gentry Day, it's always the second weekend of June, or third weekend of June, okay? Those types of things would be in there, but we wouldn't have like the sports schedule for, for 2017, that would not be in it. Just to showcase as much as we possibly can. We're looking at about roughly thirty pages of information, having it as professionally printed as we can afford to do, and also, you know, just keep it, whoever gets the printing job would have that in their inventories, they, you know, we need another thousand copies, so they could print that out, and we could use it for whatever event that would want to.
Got a estimate on, I heard you corrected the five K, that, how many, how many, what kind of distribution are we talking about there? As far as our rank?
That's about three...
Publication, I guess.
Three thousand copies to serve.
Three thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And of course, the more you print at one time, the better pressure you have.
I'd be curious what you think of that, Jesse.
I have a draft in my office.
I'm curious what you think about being the point man, or...
Like I said, I have a draft in my office. This is, this is my idea, so, I mean, this is my dad's idea, funny enough.
So it's your dad's idea, you're peddling, you got Vince to peddle.
Come on, man!
It really, it started, Mark, is we were gonna do...
Obviously, starting with Jesse's dad.
At the chamber meeting, we were gonna do just a business phone directory. Then as the discussion went on, we just said, well, we should do something a little bit more than that, we should just, as the discussion went on, we came up with this community guide, and Jesse brought us some copies of different community guides, and we looked at those, and it's, you know, having something in your hand that you can really look and see what the community has to offer, is that I think this will be a very positive sounding point.
You see, is it, is it an advertising medium, or is it a, or is it an ad-free and showcase?
There's gonna be some ad space available, there won't be a tremendous amount, though, okay?
So you obviously don't have a problem with Jesse.
And to be fair, it wasn't a bias, so, like, Teresa's had copies, and she's been saving, putting guys in her office for years. You know, we were looking through this business directory, and I thought it was a bad idea to do that, and it seemed to be contentious with the committee as well, the board. I think it's the way to go, and I've been pushing it for the last month or two. And I would prefer to be the point person, because more than much, I was promoting Hartford, this is a promotion piece. It's an opportunity for us to put our town on the paper, craft a message, craft one with a C, showcase the different elements that make our town great.
What, what other communities have this?
Well, ones that I collected are just kind of a few of small towns around us. I'd have a chance to look at Brandon's or T's or Harrisburg's, but of course, I have some followers.
I've seen Brandon's, T's, and Harrisburg's, yeah. Most of the towns around us have them, yeah. They're nice, magazine, color coffee, it is a good promotional item to have.
Seen hotels a lot.
I have seen Crocs, I have seen Parkers, Parsons, Medrals.
So in this era of the web, does it track with our website then, or...
We could absolutely promote the website, and, you know, the city website, the chamber website, and whatever website that you want. And it would be absolutely tied into all the other activities that are going on, to try and promote a positive image for the community.
I'm gonna make a motion that the city cover up to $6,000 for the community guide, and make Jesse the point man of the project.
Second. So, the $6,000, $5,000, that gets us 3,000 copies, you're gonna provide that to Hartford residents? There's 3,000 Hartford residents, what happens after that? There's about 900 to 1,000 actual households. Okay, so we wanna go with that.
952 as of February of last year. I got that right here.
What is that thing?
What is it? Yeah.
I thought it was on his hand.
I know, 72, I'm sorry.
It's actually a phone.
Is that a roll model? Is that a razor?
Yeah.
It is kind of small.
Come on, I was being concise to the point.
Well, I guess, so, so once we run out of 3,000, then what's the plan from there? You know, make more, I mean? Make more, or if we, depending on what timeline we're on, maybe it's time to revamp part of it, okay?
Just play it by ear?
Exactly.
My initial reaction is do it annually, depending on if the money's there, just to keep pictures fresh, given that people's minds fresh, they'll see it, probably throw it away after a week or two, and then save it, like, we put in their magazine cabinet, people's not thinking about it, send it out annually, update the pictures, again, just keep, give it in front of people's eyes. And of course, you put it in the businesses too, where people walk in, and, oh, look at that right there, community guide, pick it up, and...
My gut reaction is the return on investment for five, or for $6,000 is pretty good. It's very good.
Yeah.
That's why the chamber overwhelmingly supported the project to get it going. And we were planning first quarter 2017, we want to push this hard and fast and get it out there before the summer activity really starts to pick up.
Being on the former ground floor of the infamous phone book directory, I'm elated to hear you come up with this concept, because that was, that was, that was painstaking for the AGDC and the Chamber of Commerce as we picked it up, and you guys dealt, Mark, you dealt with it, as one of the big issues, and the way you get the timeline set up, I like where you're going with it big time, and I can see where Jesse can use it. And I have Michelle Thompson, you know, and any of the realtors, love that concept, it makes a lot of sense, and...
Good for tax consultants.
All right, so we get a motion, second, we got any more discussion? Jim?
You want to put any timeline on when the monies are available to them, we just, I mean, we want to push this off to 17?
I think the money's available to them wherever they need it.
It'll probably be 17 by the time you get your bids and everything.
Yeah.
All right, that's a call of vote, Jones.
All right.
Yeah, Keel. Yes. Horn. Yes. Nelson.
Yes, I'm willing to never bring back a phone directory again.
Monahan.
Yeah.
Thank you, Vince.
I think you want to put a phone directory on the website.
No, that's perfect, that's great.
All right, billboard lease, East Base of Billboard Four.
So in your packet is the billboard lease, and it's our standard billboard lease for the East Base of number four currently. Legend's Western Ware is on that, that lease expired at the end of November, that will be coming down. Todd Ferris with Pizza Ranch would like to rent that billboard out. It's like I said, our standard three-year lease, the price is $200 a month, which is our standard that we offer to everybody on that side. No additional lighting, it's our standard lighting from dusk to midnight, he's agreed to all the terms and conditions, so he would like to approve, the council to approve him to lease that for Pizza Ranch advertising.
There's one change I'd like to make to the lease, and the current tenant has a sign up there that we're gonna take down, and the lease doesn't address what happens in the event the city takes it down. I want to add some language that says, if you don't remove your sign and your stuff, the city can do that, and can bill you for the reasonable cost of that. We don't have that in here, and I'd like to just put that into the new lease, if that's okay.
Craig, are you okay with that? You obviously put up billboards for...
We're not gonna be very careful taking them down.
No, that's fine, I understand, yeah. You put up billboards, and you have to take it down.
Take it down, you can easily put it up, I mean, yeah, if it gets that point, that is something we can do, we can only hire somebody that...
And we'd add this language to all leases for number four, because it just, our standard one doesn't address that, and now we're in a situation where it looks like we have to take it down.
Two separate motions here?
I think if you make the motion to include that language...
I make a motion to approve the East Base, East Base side of billboard number four, allowing to Pizza Ranch, along with the stipulation that the person, keep it, keep in on track, Jerry, the, the business...
You see?
Scott, Scott knows that the new lease be granted to Pizza Ranch.
Yeah.
With the addition of language, which would provide that the tenant is responsible for sign removal at the end of the lease, and in the event the tenant does not remove the sign, the city may remove the sign and bill it to the tenant.
That's a long one, Audrey, you got that?
I didn't type it all, but I got it, I'm still typing.
No, that's fine, no, I mean, it was...
Yeah, you, you...
I understand Scott's words, Lou.
I'll say it back. We're still working together.
All right, second, any discussion?
Everybody thinks Milton's captain would say that.
It's taken a lot of time, but you're right.
Probably could see his lips move.
Yeah, but it's in the spirit.
Spirit of the motion.
Spirit of the motion!
Yes.
Horn. Yes. Keel.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Monahan.
I knew it, if you help spell it.
Just a note on that, does Pizza, does Pizza Ranch have another spot or...
They had, they sublease from, there's another billboard on there, ABR, and they sublease a third of that from them. They want to keep that up there as well.
Also, they...
Yeah, 'cause I asked, well, will you get that one now for one day, and they want to keep them both up from the end.
Now, do we, do we still have a waiting list?
Yep, and they were the ones at the top of the list when the billboard came available, and, yeah, I got a list of about five people for the east, yeah, coming into Hartford, yeah.
Five, okay, interesting.
All right.
Yep.
Mickelson Road project update, you've been having discussions, Teresa?
Okay, well, this one, we have a little update of where we are with Mickelson Road, like Mitch said. You know, do want to bring you up to date, the, what land delineation has been done by Clarkson has been sent in, so that's been taken care of. Stockwells are still working on cost estimates and the final plans for it. We did have a meeting with the landowner to the south of Mickelson Road. We discussed earlier where the design we were looking at, we would need a little corner of their property for the road to go through, so we did meet with that landlord to discuss the possibility of them selling a part of, you know, that little corner to us that we need for that road design. The landowner was, seemed open to selling the city a portion, he seemed agreeable to giving us the construction easements we needed, selling, you know, that little corner that we need. He did ask that, you know, a part of his property, which is already in the city...
He did ask that, you know, a part of his property, which is already in the city, which is a lot, which goes, you know, there's this map I put in here for you, which basically the city annexed back when we did our lagoons down here. He would like that to be deannexed, so he wouldn't get an assessment right away on it, so there would be delayed assessment, just like everything else, so, um, basically it boils down to, he's willing to negotiate a, a sale on that corner piece of property, but he would like this portion deannexed in the city. We originally, just to give you a little background on it, you know, when we put in the lagoons, this property, Pressman's over here, wasn't part of the city, so in order to put in the lagoons, we needed a strip of land contiguous that would, you know, connect it to the city, so he annexed that into the city as a rural service district and allowed us to do those lagoon system. Well, since that time, now Pressman's had annexed their land, so we don't essentially need this little strip in here, we have that continuation here, so that's a little background on it. I thought tonight I'd be able to, we'd be able to discuss, um, a price on that land. I talked to the gentleman this afternoon about four o'clock, wanting to confirm the price on it, and, um, he wants some more time to think about it. He, he's not set on that price, he's doing a little talking with the area auctioneers, um, thinks that maybe he wants to change that price, and he didn't give me a price on the phone, a different price, so sure, it'll probably be more, I don't know, you know. I asked him when he would be able to come up with a price, I said we had a meeting tonight, and then our next meeting is on the twentieth, he says he will have something to us by the twentieth, so. At this point, I don't know if we have a whole lot of discussion to talk about since we don't have a price nailed down from him, but that's what our discussions were, that if we can come up to a viable price for that corner piece of property, and if we deannex that strip of land, he'd be willing to sell us, you know, that, so.
Would there be an issue deannexing that with the, uh, with the road easement there, Patrick, I mean, should we, should we pull back a portion of that?
The road we own, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we own thirty-three feet, I think, is all there.
Full right away.
Yeah, he's asking about the other thirty-three.
Oh, the other thirty-three feet.
Yeah, we should probably look at that.
Yeah, 'cause we don't wanna deannex it in...
Is that how hard it is to get those?
Yep.
I would also, I would also encourage the council to look at going around that land, going around the south side. I talked to Mitch earlier today, and Mitch doesn't think there's a plan B, and I find that hard to believe. So I would really like the consensus of this council to have Mitch look at a plan B, and that plan B going around that landowner, because the thing I don't get is the price on that corner lot, in addition to deannexing the property, which is gonna save that person probably nearly fifty thousand dollars in street assessments? So, I don't have a good feeling about the price that land's gonna come back down.
I haven't had the greatest feeling about what the price of that land's been, gonna be at anyways.
So I don't know, that's, between now and the twentieth, I would like, I would like stockpile engineers to at least come up with, I think Mitch said that, uh, how'd you say that today?
We have, we have different options, we've looked at several different options, um, to not, you know, uh, impact that property, we're probably looking at retaining walls, something to that effect that we'd have to put in, so...
There, there's gotta be something else, Mitch.
Well, we'll look at other options, but what, what you essentially will need is a cost estimate for, for those options, to point those in comparison to this option.
And, and, and I, and I think another part of the, another part of the conversation we're not having up to this point is Mr. Assam. I think we need to get Mr. Assam involved, 'cause it doesn't have to be a city conversation with a landowner, and a city conversation with Mr. Assam, and a city conversation with whoever, you know, we need to get all the players, and everybody has to have skin in the game. Because after my conversation with you today, and after my conversation with Teresa today, I got the feeling that the city's walking down the road to a three-point-three million-dollar project, and the city has the lease to gain. And, right now, I'm, I'm not, I'm not feeling like walking down that road.
Well, the, the part that concerns me about the deannexation of it, now that Kiel brings that up, that's, that's a big part of it, is Patrick, but the other piece of it is, so, you put a deferred assessment on that piece of Mickelson right there, and we don't regain those funds until they sell it, until that person sells it, there's, there's nothing, there, you know, we, they could sit there for, they could sit there for years. They could sit there for decades, especially if the family also wants to keep it for some reason, so like that deferred assessment, essentially, you could, you could be putting in your second street by the time you do it. Well, and I think that's essentially why this project's never happened in the past, is because of that particular issue. We haven't been willing to put up, put that money upfront and carry it inevitably, so...
Mark, you mentioned that in one of the first conversations we had about this deal, that we need to realize, the city's gonna be carrying that.
Sure we are.
We're gonna be carrying a lot of debt on that for a long time.
And, and...
Unless we, unless it sells.
And you guys, I mean, I don't want that paid as bad as anybody's setting up here at this table, but I'm not gonna, I agree, we're not gonna get into a bad deal. I, when I read that today, I thought, man, this is, I would call this an overreach, I mean, I can see getting a price for this land, but when you tie, tie both of them together, I agree, I'm glad you brought that up, 'cause I thought the same thing.
Well, for three-point-three million, you can start looking at other land, other development.
Exactly, I mean, you could...
You could just let that Mickelson sit there.
You, you could buy land, give it away, do a developer, can be money ahead, so...
We, we should all benefit, it shouldn't be some...
But, but that, that's why, that's why Mr. Assam needs to be at the table.
I agree with that.
So, 'cause I, I know what the property owner on the south is gonna gain, I know what Mr. Assam's gonna gain, and I know what the city's gonna be on the hook for, you know, and I know that, you know, long-term, the city's gonna benefit from the Assam development, but, you know, what, what timeframe are we looking at there? So, I, I, I think there's a lot of moving pieces to this, and without a plan B that doesn't involve retaining wall... I didn't, I'm not gonna speak for my fellow council members, but I don't think we're gonna put up a retaining wall on the end of Mickelson.
I think the reality is, is if, if, I don't see this project happening without that piece, 'cause it gets expensive to go along other options. It puts pressure, I mean, the pressure is, and I understand that, you know, we're in public meetings, we're talking about this, but the pressure is, we say, no, we're not gonna put it in. Assam needs that to go in, so very soon, the pressure comes from him, from this landlord.
That's exactly, I told Teresa that, I said, maybe you ask him, and this other property owner, maybe they have a conversation.
They have different interests.
Maybe, maybe, they need to be buying and selling land, and trading land, and whatever they do, so, and just leave the city out of it.
If we don't use, uh, Stumpy's ground, he'd have to pay for about twenty-four thousand in street assessments on that chunk, that's, yeah, that's annexed in right now.
Just on that piece that gets it almost to clover...
Almost fifty thousand, it was about six hundred feet.
Was it six hundred, I see it was just three, three hundred feet, oh, yeah, six hundred feet, so he's about fifty thousand dollars that he's gonna have to work out for not working with that land, so, he might be willing to...
So we'll...
But I think he knows that though.
We'll put it on the burner.
Mitch maybe look at it a little bit more and...
Anything else?
Any more direction on that at all?
The other thing, the other thing that the city needs to realize, as you talk about land acquisition, is your ability to acquire, buy in its domain. And there are domain actions that have gone very well for cities, and there are some that have gone poorly. One down in Lennox poorly, it went poorly where they paid, I think, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of land in condemnation action, where they could've bought it for a hundred and seventy-five, but the city didn't buy it and let a jury decide what the value was. City of Canton went through and did some condemnation, and initially, we had an appraisal done, which I thought was very low, and I convinced the council to go ahead and have it reappraised, and, and we ended up settling basically for the reappraised value, which was three times what the initial appraisal was. When you do condemnation, um, when you get to the jury portion, there's an amount of money that's there, and if they beat you by twenty percent, you have to pay for their attorney and their appraiser, so it keeps the system kinda honest, but it is something you, you need to understand, you do have the ability to acquire the, the property and let a jury decide what it's worth, if you think you're being held hostage. I want you to understand that.
Can you do that outside the city too?
Well, I think, I think you have the ability to acquire it outside of the city, if you can get property for city purposes. The other thing obviously is you, if you're gonna acquire the property, he has to annex it in, and, and then just so the council is, is aware of why that land was annexed initially, is that it had to be within the city, and way back then, the city tried to get some land outside of town, and everybody outside of town said, we don't wanna smell, you know, your waste, and you guys were forced into doing the same thing that, that T is done, and that Harrisburg is done, and you guys have done, and that was acquiring land where you could control your planning and zoning, and that, that swatch in there was that size, so it couldn't be challenged on being a flight pole anexation, you know, just a thirty-three-foot piece of land like they did out to the, the airport in Rapid City, which subsequently we fixed and allowed them to do that. They used to hook that to the city by using a US highway to run out to, I think about like ten miles, they ran on several things, and, but, anyway, so there's another, there's another way to do it, just so you realize it was that way.
Okay. And using, using that would be, what, that's point-six acres, or what is, what is that?
Yeah, that's what we have estimated right now.
That's all of this, I mean?
Yeah.
That wouldn't be very much of imminent domain that we're talking about.
Yeah, and I, and I'm gonna, and I'm gonna tell you, if, and I'm making this number up, but if, if it was worth the ten thousand dollars an acre, and he wanted twenty, and if you crossed the finish line, you said to me, what should we do? I'd say give him the twenty, 'cause you're gonna burn up more money fighting about it than you are getting, than just paying that for the land. But if he said he wanted a million bucks, he'd be hearing me say, well, that's insane, because that has no relationship to what the value of the land is. And, and then sure, when you, as soon as you get it done, he'll come in and wanna develop his land. Not just, that's, it happens a lot.
It'd be all right with that.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
All right, discussion of city land. All of those, you do the city land up there.
Well, just on the agenda, um, because basically, Mark and I, those Travis met with Mitch, Jesse, and a couple of HADC members, we gave them direction after our last meeting to, uh, talk about the five acres that the city has north of town, there are lots, you know, that we have by the fire station, and basically, maybe hopefully come to a consensus of, of what they suggest, we should, we should do it with the property, so I don't know if you wanna, you or Travis wanna update them on your discussions or...
Whatever.
All right, Travis will correct me if, if I get anything wrong. We'll take the easy one first, the, the lots on the south end of town, east of the fire station. It was the consensus of, of that group that the city hold onto that land. With, with the problems that it has, what it would take to, to make it buildable, you know, you could easily get in a situation where you'd have more in the land where, than what it was worth, what you'd sell it for, um, and really, it, it, another thing Craig talks about, a new city shop, you know, there's, there's nothing to say that we couldn't use that land for piles, we couldn't use that land for, uh, for a new city shop. Of course, Craig would probably say that that's not enough land, but the fire station's doing pretty well on two lots, I think Craig'd deal all right on five, so... So that's it in a nutshell, I, I think, for the time being, we just don't even consider, the recommendation would, would be to not even consider selling it, don't even entertain the thought. Uh, the land east of Central States, the five acres, the only way that really makes sense, the, the first hurdle that has to be gone over is, uh, is the right-of-way, or the easement, the sixty-six or eighty-foot easement, that we would only have half of, because the Wintersteins would have the other half. If, it never dawned on me before, but if you look at that, if you build that entire road on the west side, then of course it doesn't line up with what a future road would be on the north side, so then sometime in the future, somebody would say, who are the idiots that built this street eighty-degree intersection out of whack? So, so the thought of even putting that street in doesn't make sense without, without the Wintersteins thirty-three or forty-foot. So once you get past that hurdle, then you get into, you know, do you sell it as a whole five acres, do you replant it, do you put the street in? We ran the numbers, and bare minimum was, I believe, two-fifty a foot. Two-fifty a foot, I believe, is like break-even money, that's not profit, that's break-even.
If you sell, if you build a road solely on six properties, right?
Yeah. Either, either way, well, actually, if, if you built the entire road on the west, it'd be, it would be more, because you wouldn't recoup anything from Wintersteins until, well, I don't think you'd ever...
Yeah, our, our idea was to try to do a delayed assessment there also, with Wintersteins, with...
Best, best-case scenario, just to break even on the, if you have just about four-and-a-half acres, I think.
Yeah.
Bare minimum, to break even on four-and-a-half acres, you'd need two-fifty a foot. So it was that group's consensus to just tell Teresa that if anybody's interested in that land, that just walks in off the street and comes in her office, the first thing she says is two-fifty a foot, and if they're not interested in two-fifty a foot, it doesn't make any sense to bring it to us. And I, I don't know how far anybody's gonna go with that, because I think you're getting real close to two-fifty a foot at Costello's.
Two-seventy-five now.
Well, but you don't wanna say it.
Yes.
So if it's two-fifty a foot up there and nothing's built, or two-seventy-five a foot in the road and the lights are already in, so I, I think at this time, at this time, you know, it's two-fifty a foot, or, or we're not even having the conversation.
Correct me if I'm wrong, did we also have some discussion about if you talk to Wintersteins, should you talk to them about five acres?
Yeah, we did, we talked about that.
I don't think they went very well.
Yeah, we had that meeting today with the Wintersteins.
We can update John that meeting today. So, so we did meet with the Winterstein family this morning earlier to just discuss and present that, you know, would they be interested in donating that other thirty-three feet to the city, and Mitch did a good job of explaining, you know, um, you know, for future growth, it would line up the intersections, we put it on a delayed assessment, so, you know, you won't pay anything upfront and be, if they are, if they sell it off in the future, somebody else annexes it, and then that's when it become due. They didn't seem real excited about that proposal. We also asked them too, if they were interested in selling part of their land, maybe a few acres, and the city would be able to put in the road ourselves, and we'd have property, you know, that we could market on both sides. Didn't seem real excited about that proposal either, so, they did say that they would go home, talk about, think about, and get back to us, um, like I said. They, from past dealings with the city, you know, they got a delayed assessment on their property way back when, when we originally put the, the water main of Western, um, that still, I think, has a sour taste in their, their mouth, you know, they're just not excited. They haven't paid anything on it, 'cause they're not in any extent, but they just don't like it sitting out there against their property, so, I mean, they, they did say they would think about it and entertain it, so I mean, it isn't a no, but, um... So, I mean, they they did say they would think about it and entertain it, so I mean, it is a no, but not sure how far they'll go, but we'll open the door and think about it.
Well, that's the best way to get something growing is to plant some seeds.
So I guess that's kind of where we left it, just to not even entertain an offer to to purchase the land to the south. And the only entertainment, you know, the only offer that we would entertain up north would be two fifty foot or more, so.
Two fifty a foot is, you said, break even?
I think that number gets better.
The two fifty a foot came from, if we were to build all the infrastructure, build the road, that's what we would need to recoup those costs.
It's around one forty-five or something.
Yeah, it's about a dollar forty, I think.
If we were, if we were able to delay the assessment to the Wintersteins, then I think it was half that.
Yeah.
So with every, all the kind of unknowns, I think we just said draw nine, two fifty.
Yeah, so I think really it just, uh, it it's either, it's either a five acre lot for something that that Jesse can find to fit in there. Or sell it to somebody for two fifty foot at this, at this time.
Or more.
Or more.
We we really didn't want to, so we didn't want to parse it out.
No, because you you still have to get, you still have to get your two fifty a better.
Right, yeah, better.
You know, and then it it just doesn't make sense. I mean, if if a buyer came in and offered they, you know, I think you look at them like they're crazy because they could do the same thing for a quarter better. You know, so I think right now, unfortunately, we're just in a, we just continue to be in a holding pattern unless Jesse finds a magic company that needs four and a half acres.
We've had, what, three parties that have been, that have expressed interest in this land now?
Yeah.
So if it came to the size you go at this price point, we'll be, we'll be reaching out to these three parties and telling them, this is the number.
Two fifty foot.
Two fifty foot.
But like I said, that's just the consensus of that group that met.
Right.
I mean, if if that's, if those are the marching orders that we're gonna give Teresa, then this council needs to tell Teresa that it's two fifty a foot or there's no point in even bringing it to the council.
And I like that, I mean, I think it it takes away, like we talked about, the pot shots at it and re-urging it every single time for lower offers. So do you need a consensus of the council? Do you need a motion?
I I'd probably like a motion.
Like a motion?
I know.
I think a motion that if anybody approaches the city administrator about city land, the land on South Street is not for sale. And the land of four and a half, five acres east of Central States is two dollars and fifty cents a foot.
Second.
Discussion.
All right. Jesse's got a question.
There, but we talked about that two fifty being just again what people see. So if the right conversation comes about, maybe that that would be affirmed to a fifty, but a negotiable two fifty. Am I correct?
If they said they were gonna build a building and employ fifty people, I would say this council would probably entertain less than two fifty.
Right, and if and if you're saying that in a round to a scenario that Wintersteins do sell the five acres to the H A D C. And they put in the road in, we wouldn't wanna sell the land at two fifty as per foot, I don't think anyways, because it's just not competitive.
I think this.
Wintersteins would change the equation.
Right, right.
But 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 that's a conversation we need to have in the event.
If that happens.
If that happens.
I just, I just wanna make sure the knowledge is out for that, that this motion passes and in the future we do sell the land at a different price because of different circumstances, that there's no recourse or re quo. I just wanna make sure.
No, I I I think what you need to take away from it, Jesse, is if somebody approaches you to build, uh, storage units.
How many, how many?
Well, then, I mean, I I don't think the council's gonna be on board for having a conversation less than two fifty.
For contractors.
But if you, if you get a, if you get a small business, small manufacturing that wants to come in and needs four acres, that's a conversation this council needs to have and readdress that.
Great, that's, that's good to hear. Just make sure we're on the same page about that then.
We're just setting a gatekeeper.
Yep.
If you feel it's worthwhile to have a conversation, then by all means bring it to the council, we'll have it.
I will, thank you.
As long as it's not storage units.
Oh, yeah, I won't even answer the phone, so.
Dirt bike track.
That might be that bad.
Dirt bike, whoa.
We'll let that be decided.
All right, I got a motion and second. Any other discussion? Horn.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Yeah. Getting pretty good on that, right?
So Jeremy? We want to look into the possibility of leasing that land to that farmer for three hundred bucks an acre, whatever he's paying for alfalfa and take the chance of having to buy that back out and lease utilize the land, I mean.
I'd love.
I mean, it's, you got the farmer there, I think that's what he's paying, it's three hundred acres, ain't for, for something. I mean, if we had to buy it, we'd do the same contract we have with them, set it up like the same where we, if something gets big that comes by and, you know, wants to build on it, we buy back his crop from him basically.
Basically, we're on a five-year lease with him now for the east side of the sports complex. He farms it. If something comes along where we want to use more to develop it, then we just buy him out.
Are we doing a year-by-year lease on that?
Well, every year we we look at it, see, do we have any plans for development?
Right.
And tell them, you can continue renting just amount of acres or if we're gonna reduce it, then we.
Because right now it's just weeds and we go out there mow it three, four times a year, so, I mean.
What's a bed cost on five acres, hundred, hundred fifty an acre? Rent it for three hundred, what's, and you said we're gonna buy his crop back.
I can't, I don't have the cost of that.
Is that what he has invested into the?
What he's gotten invested into, and I think he had numbers.
Yeah, Larry went through and come up.
He was gonna put in alfalfa and and he told us that the useful life of alfalfa seed of the crop was a certain period of time. We confirmed what that was and then we came up with a formula that, uh, like if he was in his fifth year and we took it and then we didn't pay him anything, fourth year, it was this amount, third year.
Sure. Full rate, basically.
Okay, okay.
All right. Do we, would we have to open that up to to public scrutiny later or can we just operate it like?
I I think you should. There's a, there's a proposal that you, there's, there's a language that says you can go lease on whatever terms and conditions you want to as long as you have a public agreement first. And that's how everybody can come in and participate. And that's the way you would have done it the first time.
We took bids on it the first time.
We may have just thrown that out there, Casey.
Good idea. It's a good idea. Let's make this. But you're for that five-year lease, right? Do we get to it? I mean.
We will be two thousand seventeen, but not four thousand.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Do you want a motion for that?
Yeah, I do, if we're gonna wanna go through the bid process, you know.
Take it through.
I would make a motion to have Teresa. Get on the spot.
What do you want?
Uh, let me do that for you.
Publish.
Publish, uh, that property.
Publish for for proposals to rent, um, city property for farm crop.
Second. I guess we're making great motions tonight.
Yeah.
Working overtime.
We can leave that portion on the side.
We can start right away, you guys.
Running down.
This is a big crowd.
Do you have a big picture? Do you have everybody? Okay. Got that, all right, call book. Jones.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
I'm on it.
Yep.
All right.
All right, we had a ton of things going on. This was something that I wanted to do, just kind of an update, little bit of a, we would call it state and city address. But just to kind of jump through some statistics, where we're at, where we've been. Um, if you've been to a lot of meetings, you you've picked up on some of these. If you haven't been to all of them, you may not have picked up on some, all of these statistics. So just kind of wanna run through. Uh, my intention was that it'd be nice to be able to share this with more of the public. Maybe you gotta put a PowerPoint presentation together to make sure the public, you know, the public doesn't want to come in. I don't know, no, I'm more of a thing like, I think that, you know, busy in December, you got a lot going on. But I won't take up a ton of time because I know we don't do, we have a lot of other things to do tonight. But I will entertain sharing this in other ways, whether it's in social media or on our website or having something available for for sharing this in other ways. So if you notice anything that needs to be changed, obviously let me know. But I treat so through this, I did have a few other things since you looked at it too, so. Just to kind of give a rough idea of where we're at, what things are looking like over the next little bit. So building permits, um, you know, one of the things that helps us analyze our growth is what our building permits are doing for new construction. Saying is, um, if you're not growing, you're dying. You don't really get to sit in the middle anywhere. If you're not going somewhere, you're you're starting to fall backwards, so. Told building permit numbers, Teresa's been a huge help with pulling all this together. Residential permits, as you can see, have been steadily increasing. These include all the multifamily permits that are out there. We had six point one million dollars worth of permits so far this year. Um, don't know if you're anticipating any more in December at this point, probably not. Yeah, probably not. Um, but it's record growth here in the dollar bill. The next time, the last time we had over sixty unit permits was in two thousand seven, right before the housing crash. That was the peak year with sixty-five that year. So hopefully this isn't portraying anything like that, but, um, but I think what it says is we're we're back to that spot. We're kind of moving back to that direction, so. Commercial permits, obviously those go up and down. Um, big projects go up, you know, normal years they start to come back down. Two thousand fourteen, we had thirteen permits for three point four million. Looks like we're kind of in a regular year this year with eleven permits for one point four, so. You had mentioned in yours, I thought I saw it in there somewhere, some of the major permits this year were, um, were the Ruben Cunningham for that is coming up here soon. That was that Natty.
The Natty Gomes.
Natty Gomes. And I remember what the other ones were, to be honest with you.
I have like the Icemanish. No, that structures are already.
Yeah, I don't, no, that one didn't hit this.
Central State Edition.
Central State Edition.
That was right beginning of the year. The Glorious. No, Steve, no, that was last year.
So.
Just kind of a little bit of chaos in, you know, just kind of some little remodels, yeah, nothing.
Nothing major.
So we're kind of down.
Which kind of tells you, if it's nothing major and you're still at one point four, I mean, it's it's a couple of those big projects that really boost this one up. It takes a ton of, takes a ton of small projects, we'll jump back over that here in a minute. Takes a smother, ton of these residential permits to get to six point one. You know, you can get, you want some more permits, you need a lot more things, you know, with the commercial ones, and it's good for tax growth, so. We'll move on from there. One of those things we're talking about with all these, with people moving into town, um, one of the numbers that had popped out to us that I believe some of us came out in the housing study. Teresa also did some looking on census and found where our household income is. Um, so this is household income, it's not individual income, it's household, average household income for the area communities. Obviously, you can see the the Lincoln County communities, they're, they seem to be drawing in some of the higher ones, but we're right up there with them. Um, we're, Hartford's right up there with them. It's kind of surprising when you look at growth in Lennox, Del Rapids, Canton, some of that. I mean, um, Del Rapids and Hartford stay pretty close in a lot of different areas. But I just like what we're seeing here, I think that we're seeing a little bit more disposable income and, uh, maybe see just different jobs and things like that moving into town, so it's a good one to look at. Strengths right now when it comes to this area's growth is we have a robust growing market, families are moving in. One of the things they mentioned in the housing study is that we have the highest three-bedroom apartment rate in the state right now. Um, it was kind of an anomaly, um, the number of three-bedroom apartments that are coming into town, we have the highest. He just, he, it's like he almost had to recheck the data over and over because he couldn't believe it. Um, and what it told him, also some of the other statistics that he was looking at, is that that families are moving to Hartford. It's, um, it's small families, it's, you know, people that are just starting to have kids and and they need that three-bedroom apartment. Right now, the vacancy rates and all these apartments going up, um, still really low, one and a half percent, which is nothing really. I mean, it's, I'm, I'm sure for anybody who's been shopping for them or talked to anybody, vacancy rates are almost nothing, so, um, that's great. Another piece of it is sixty-six percent of the homes sold in the last twelve months were valued at over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So so only thirty percent of the homes, and these aren't necessarily new homes, these are existing homes. But, um, the home sale prices, and we'll see that in valuation here a little bit, the home sale prices are going up. And we're seeing that that's what's happening is it seems like the house values just keep going up higher and higher, so. Challenges that we were running to is kind of what we talked about, the typing inventory of residential lots. Right now, the the newer lots, uh, there's just not much left, right? Um, we talked about Kelly Point Edition, that one's filling in, there's not much left over there to take in. And the the houses that seem to be moving fastest for new construction are those houses that are two hundred and fifty thousand plus. And the lots available for them is starting to be gone. So, um, that's a challenge. I mean, once you, it seems like once that stops, this is, uh, the gentleman from the housing study had told us this, that once that stops, it's hard to get started again. It's hard to get that momentum going again. Once people quit looking here, um, they quit looking here. So, um, you really don't want that to go away, so that's one of the challenges. The other thing we've talked about tonight is infrastructure expenses. Um, you know, what do you do? You're putting in roads, are you delaying assessments? What are you doing because of all that growth? Another piece we'll talk about a little bit is upcoming expenses, not just for roads, but also for waste water treatment and mechanical plants and all that. Also, the tax revenue always seems to lag it, you get all that, you get all the growth, but you don't necessarily get all that tax revenue right away when people move in. It takes years to keep up with that, with all that growth. And then the other one that could be a challenge is lack of primary income jobs. So what I'm saying is that that primary breadwinner in your home, um, and, you know, having that job right here in Hartford, keeping that person right here in town. Those jobs are difficult. I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but it was pretty surprising looking at the housing study, seeing how you've got a lot of people that commute in to work here. And you got a lot of people that commute out to work somewhere else, and there's only like a hundred people that live here and work here. And out of the entire population, I might have, I I'll have to look it up to see if that number's correct, but it was really small. A lot of people commute in to work here, a lot of people commute out, but only about a hundred people.
Four hundred or something that commute in, because that number caught a lot of, yeah, we thought, where did that number come from?
Right.
Yeah, but the number of people that live here and work here was was really small, hundred, right, in the hundreds or less.
Yeah, it was small.
Yeah.
It was small. Um, and it's great when you have those, I mean, I bet if you told the numbers of those hundred people, they're some of the most active people, aren't they? They they live here, they work here, they breathe here, they go to church here, they're, everything is here. I mean, that's, those, those are, we want those residents, so. Anyway, talking a little bit about tax revenue, comparison of sales tax revenue. Basically, the first three quarters of every year from two thousand thirteen through two thousand sixteen, um, and where we sit right now. So that tax revenue has showed pretty steady growth. It's a little bit hard to see this dark green line, I couldn't change the color of it here. That dark green line is your first and second penny sales tax. Light green one, obviously, is the third penny, and this yellow one is the total of them. And, um, keeps going up. I mean, it's just, it's continuing to grow all pieces of it. That third penny moves up and down just a little bit, just depends on that, it's kind of that Ben Boostax, I believe we say. But, um, but first and second penny have have been growing pretty steadily over the years there, so. But, but first and second penny have, have been growing pretty steadily over the years there, so. The valuation growth, now, I'll quick talk about that a little bit, and Teresa backing up if there's anything I don't say correctly on this, but the way I understand valuation growth is the, the valuation of our, basically of our community, of our tax base, and, and how much that's grown compared to where it was the year before. So like what I put in here is, that growth shows the increased value as a percentage of the previous year's ending value. So if you said, okay, Hartford's worth this much, you know, all of those properties added together are worth this much at the end of one year, how much did that grow year over year? And for the years that we are looking at right here, in Miniaha County, we were the top by a lot in, in all three years. So two thousand and thirteen, you're looking at Hartford, Brandon, I only pulled these communities up, but it's, yeah, Hartford, Brandon, Del Rapids, and Sioux Falls. These are percentage growths, right? So think of these as percentages on the left-hand side. So in two thousand and thirteen, we grew by almost three percent, everybody else is lower. Two thousand and fourteen, our total valuation grew by six percent, looks like just a little bit more. Everybody else is right there. Yeah, five percent in two thousand and fifteen. Two thousand and sixteen, our valuation grew by nine and a, yeah, almost, you know, nine and a quarter, nine and a third percent, somewhere in there. So this can be, so we're looking at certain things, like from a city standpoint, that's really good. That means that we can probably take in tax revenue from the sales tax dollars without having to raise anything, be able to even lower it and, and earn more off of it. If, if you're sitting on the planning zoning board as those assessments come in, and people are wondering why their property's worth so much more, you know, it's kind of out of our hands in that case. But I think, you know, my wife's looking at this saying, who's assessing Hartford's property? You know, why is it going up so much? But I think what a big part of it is, is that, is the comparable sales just keep going up. And the neighborhoods are nice, the, everything is nice, so those comparable sales just keep happening, so. It's a much better way to grow your tax revenue than having to raise the, raise the mill levy or do anything like that, so. On the flip side, people are nervous about that. And guess what? Their houses were worth a whole lot more than it was when they built it, so. Thought that one was kind of cool.
Does that include the valuation of a bare lot as well?
You know what?
It's all property.
All property?
So whether it's got a structure on it or if it's just land, it's the value of the total property within the city, or what's in there.
Total property. Jumping over to this, this is gonna be a little bit hard to see in here, I couldn't understand, but this is, I couldn't do it better than what Teresa's got here, so I'll just put it right in there. Basically, the debt schedule, right? This is, these are the bonds, these are the, these are the, this is the debt the city has. This is, kind of goes through and talks about what's, what was the original amount of some of this, and how, when do these things mature? So when you're looking at a lot of this, a lot of our loans, especially the things that are five percent over here, much of what we have is going to be paid off next seven years. I think I put it on the next slide here, but a big part of what we've got is going to be starting to pay off quickly. But that's probably not the most important part of this slide. The most important part is, is that right now, when it comes to our debt limit, our constant, five percent constitutional debt limit is seven point nine million. And we are at, let's just make sure I got that, the five percent, we're only at the, the two point one million. And then there's the additional ten percent you can go against, that's kind of just a weird thing. Even if you add that into there, we're still on like a three point four. Meaning if we wanted to, we could go into a lot more debt, we still have a lot of room there. I don't think we want to. I think we're pretty conservative that way, yeah. But the nice thing is, is to know that we're not up against any sort of limit. We have, we have pushed the limits, our cash flow sits pretty good. But if we needed to borrow money to do something in an emergency, Greg said, hey, that mechanical plant needs to be built tomorrow, and it's going to be seven million dollars, we can do it.
And just to, if I could stop you for a minute, just for the record.
Yeah.
That debt schedule looks that good. Honestly, because of years and years of good council and good city staff. That's, that's not a fluke. I mean, that's not dumb luck.
I, I, I agree with that.
Honestly, I mean, it's twenty years. Twenty years of good councils, good decision-making, good city staff, good city administrators, the whole ball whacks. Good finance officers, so.
Not overspending, not just.
Well, and, you know, with, with a lot of those seven that are, that are going to be paid off here shortly, the bond issues, that was back in the heyday when the, when the Fed and state was handing out a lot of money for grants. You know, and I think I figured it out. I, I think when Roland was city minister, I think he brought in half a million dollars in grant money a year for ten years, I think.
Sure.
And that's when a lot of those projects got done. That's when a lot of those street projects got bonded, the wastewater plant got bonded. But, no, there was, there was, he was, he was good mayor, he was good council, but had been making prudent financial decisions.
Good financial. Well, and it shows because the infrastructure there, like that good base.
Well, what, what it, what it shows you is the decisions that you make this year will affect the city councils in this city for twenty years.
Yep.
I mean, if you bond a big project, it's going to affect this city's debt schedule for years and years and years. And it's going to affect, you know, your, what you can borrow in an emergency. You know, whether you do bump up against the wall and, and have to go to a special election to, to raise your debt limit, so. And right now, we don't. I mean, we've done a lot of stuff in this town, and we've never had any other people to raise it.
Yep. No, I agree. I think that's, and, you know, one of the things we'll look at here is, well, actually, we'll get to some of that here in a little bit too, but it's, yeah, it's important to keep that low. And not every project, we have to borrow the full amount. I mean, we're sitting on cash reserves, we're doing well, yeah, doing well with all of that. I didn't put that part in here, but we've been saving money as well. And that's the nice piece, is that there's, there's money in savings account for those emergencies and all that too. So, future improvements on the radar, you know, and it's not, they're subject to change. We never know exactly how these things are going to fall into place. But this is, we're gonna jump to another big sheet of paper here, which is the C I P, or at least the first page of the C I P, as we look through it there. And, you know, as you're looking through some of that, actually, some of that's hard to look at, but you're looking at projects that are, you're looking at Mickelson Road projects, where you're looking at three point three million, which are estimates at these points. You're looking at some, some of that. Trying to, that other wastewater facility there, was that, that one point one that's on there? Craig, do you remember what that one is? I'm sure you remember.
That was the research and potentially.
Was that the research piece of it?
That's more just, yeah, just maybe purchasing some land and getting the studies done, finding out what we need to, as far as what plant or what we need to go with, something like that.
What we need to do, because that number's right over here.
Yep.
Whereas if we went with a mechanical plant, and we were looking at two thousand and twenty, possibly spending about seven million dollars in there, so. As all that debt starts to pay off, it's, yeah, looks like we could be coming a little bit back into some of that, which is, which is fine. We gotta be able to make sure we do that, but to March point is, we can't get crazy now because we got some big expenses coming up down the road, and they're not that far down the road really, so. And a big reason I want to bring this up, and I would just want citizens to see it, is that it's, it's planned out and they're big money to spend as we go down the road, so. Right now, where are we? A lot of the key metrics are improving, things look really good, revenue's growing, property tax rates have been decreasing because of previous councils doing some things, being able to keep those. I say property tax rates, it's really that mill levy is, being able to do things to bring that mill levy down. Property valuation is increasing, so the total amount coming in has still been healthy and still been doing real good. Large portion of the current debt gets paid off in the next five to seven years. So jumping back over there, you see a lot of that stuff starting to come off in the next five to seven years. Sitting in pretty good shape for future growth. One of the challenges, like we said, those infrastructure costs, tripping industry, finding ways to get, get more of those jobs, more of those, those jobs right here in town, and keeping that steady reliable growth without hitting a roadblock right up here. So like, we're talking about all of these things happening with, with land coming up. We don't want to have anything that slows it down or just brings it to a screeching halt, like, like it can happen if you're, and things to do. So, we talked about tax revenue, like. Biggest advantages we've got, just listed them all here. I, I thought of it as I was walking up, one of the things I needed to put up here was the central school district, and I didn't, but I needed to add that on there. But advantages for whether it's residential or business is proximity to Sioux Falls, experienced city staff, healthy balance sheet. We've been, you know, some of the things we've been talking about is putting that money in the balance, putting that money in the savings account, having city staff who are experienced, know what's going on, they're looking after all of that, super. Forward-thinking leaders, I think we've, we've established, we're doing a good job with that. We're starting to look in the future as past councils have. Right now, especially we've got a vibrant self-sustaining chamber. Mine is maybe at six thousand. I'm just kidding. No, it's doing really well, and you know, we don't want to, we don't want to stop it at all. The chambers have been doing an awesome job. You have sixty people at that, at your annual meeting, that's pretty huge.
Approaching ninety members.
Approaching ninety members. Who'd have thought a couple of years ago? You know, that's huge. Getting really well-connected, active, outward-seeking organization. You know, they're meeting all the time, they're talking about things going on. I think one of the nicest things about them is that they are, they're connected. I mean, they, as far as people they know, what's going on and who's building what. I think it's exactly what a development group is supposed to look like. And our community volunteerism, I think that was pretty evident this last weekend with Hartford Hometown Christmas. You're just seeing people come out, they're not afraid to jump into things like the chamber. They're not afraid to jump in and help with all those committees. There's a lot of local pride and huge sense of community. So we may not have some of that growth that you see down in Harrisburg right now. You may not have some of those things that we're, they're seeing down there. But you give that up, you give up some of that sense of community that explodes like it has down there. You can't, there's, there's almost no sense of community when you're in some of those places that grew too fast, so. We have all of that, so I think we're sitting in pretty good shape there. And I think that's it. So just a quick little run-through. I don't have a regurgitation for some, but I wanted, I know it was important just to see where we're at. Want to see where we're at next year this time too, so. All of that. It's on the west side, if you go to Harvard's, Harvard Chamber, west side.
Okay.
Go to visit the element. Be there. Oh, you know, that was just, that was tomorrow, that day, everybody. Okay. Any visitors that want to be? Correspondents, we've got the email, the letter, packet, discussion on Van Mark Avenue concern. It's been a little bit of discussion, I know Travis and I have talked about it a little bit over this last month. Teresa and I have talked about it a little bit over this last month. And I, I do want to say, okay, it's, you know, I'm hearing on almost every unpaved street in the last two weeks, I've heard it, and I think it's the nature of, I don't want to, I don't want to discount anything, I don't take it the wrong way, but it's the nature of a really nice fall, and none of the roads are frozen, and it's wet, and it's pot holy, and it's messy, you know, and it's just hard right now at this time, but. Van Mark, I think, anyway. We had a letter that came in, email, a person that lived along there, just wondering, you know, what the options are. So Teresa put some options, as you've seen in the packet here, you know, what they look like. Kind of comes down to, do the landowners down there, how interested are they? I should say, I should forward that too. I got a follow-up email that, you know, she had said, basically, if it's not paving, is there anything else? You know, is there, is there something we can, that can be done to that road to improve it? That isn't, if it's not asphalt, if that wouldn't pass, is there something else that can be done where it's a, it's a sturdier, heavier road with gravel?
You know, having more of a mess, recycled asphalt and that stuff, if you put that in there, it does not make a good road. You've got crushed concrete, which is going to be just like gravel, basically. It's going to be dusty, it's not gonna, it's going to be rough. Gravel, made water, that's just tires you. Just that recycled, a lot of people think that's perfect, it works fine for parking lots, but once it starts to get pot holy and low out, you can't blade it, you can't do nothing with it, except just keep throwing stuff in the holes, so.
And when we talked about this about three years ago, we talked about doing maybe an asphalt map. Wasn't a lot of the problem too, drainage in there, you know, if you don't correct the drainage, it's not going to hold up, and you're not going to be able to correct the drainage without Kermit Gutter, you know. We've got the half of the road away.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the discussion three years ago only were those folks from Pennant's property to Buckholz property.
The discussion on the asphalt map was just right south of the Partee Station, north, yeah, it was it. From Route thirty-eight, yeah.
And that's, and that's, and Mitch correctly wrote, I remember this distinctly, from city limits to Highway thirty-eight, I believe the number was one point four million dollars.
Yeah, that was ballpark.
Remember, because I was astonished by that.
Yep. That was for Kermit Gutter and Stormtroop.
I'm not astonished anymore, it's the same.
Right, in fact, I think that was, we couldn't see it because it was, yeah, but it was, it's in the C I P at like one point something.
Like Teresa stated too, with that road, there's, we only got half the way through there. It's, it's a mess, that road is, it's.
It's much better today. But as soon as it gets firm, then it's a great place for kids to burn out. It tears it up quick too.
I chased him off on a city property.
Or a person.
I sent him here with.
So the fifty-five percent, nothing's really changed there from three, three years ago, right?
Well, like within.
But apparently with this correspondence, that's a change of pace. When I had that discussion three years ago, with that person that authored that email, it seems to me that, that those said, that this person is now willing to pay for an inch for improvement to this road. Am I wrong by, by, by assuming that?
I don't know if they're willing to pay. Three years ago, they weren't willing to pay it. They felt directly thrown, so they weren't going to pay more.
I don't know that you could infer that from us, it just says.
I don't think you can for that.
Our tax dollars should ensure that we have a drivable road.
That's, okay, and that's still, well, I've heard that.
Not that they're on board to do it right.
So, so, you know, three years ago, and I'm, I'm sorry, Mark, jumping here, but, you know, our problem was that, that we could not get the fifty-five percent to, to make it happen, even if we could at that point in time. And I don't see anything that's, that's really changing that, besides for one said individual that came here annually and, and begged us to do something, and he was more than willing to pay the frontage fees.
Like I said, you want to get a majority of the property owners to petition to do it, because then you're going to ensure, well, you know, essentially, then you won't have the chance for the ones that are against it to overturn it, because you got to do a resolution.
Well, I think, I think the only thing that's changed in the last three years will be the protesting, the county council protests, or not protests, but it's overriding a protest now.
By two-thirds.
The change is fifty-five percent could use to stop it, you know, if it's protested.
Right.
It could still be referred, but the council not have the ability by two-thirds vote to override.
It could still be referred, but the council now has the ability by a two-thirds vote to override the protest.
And when did that happen?
Uh, three years ago, when we rewrote, uh, uh, the process.
Okay.
Um, and that's when we also put in that you could, that we, that you can now assess for anything. You can be limited to sewer water and.
Okay, now, now.
Now you do it for buildings, you can do it for, for anything that qualifies as a structure.
So you can, so just to, uh, just to make sure I'm clear on it, you can go in and say, putting the road in, we're assessing the property owners, they can refer it.
Yeah.
And with two-thirds vote, you can say, yeah, it's, we're gonna keep doing it anyway.
No, no, what, what the statute says right now is, is that, um, fifty-five percent of the property owners could object. Under the old, under the old statute, fifty-five percent of them objected and stopped the project, so you always said, we have to have fifty-five percent to start out, or we're not gonna spend. Only the engineer, now, uh, when you get to that spot and fifty-five percent object, if the city council by a two-thirds, uh, vote could overrule that objection. As it relates to the ability to refer that, you would not be able to, um, override an election if it referred and it was voted down.
Sure, okay.
Still running into a problem with the, the right of way on the north end of the question.
And then you can do them in that domain thing, yeah, I do. And just, just the fifty-five percent, I mean, that's the electoral college of property owners, right, because it's a footage, so the more footage you own.
Yes, it's footage, yeah, not the number.
The more, the more your vote count.
Yeah, it's, it's fifty-five percent.
You got California and New York up there, and then everybody else.
Exactly, and then.
And when, in the old days when you wanted.
You use a lot of electoral college, yeah, right.
But, but in the old days when you wanted to game it, you, you made the project big enough to where the people that were against it didn't matter. You piggybacked all the projects into it, and people that really wanted, like, like we did Second Street, to, everybody on Second Street wanted, we had to throw one another a small project somewhere, just to push it through.
A, a, a little slubby street, just to get it, you know.
Just, yeah, just throw something in here and there, it keeps the, the prices coming good, but you're, you're safe with your footage, you got the yes vote, so the, the small block that really didn't want it, really can't water it out, so.
So that show majority, yeah.
It goes by project, not by street.
So, so you could piggyback this on the Mitchellson.
Yep.
You, you could, yeah.
Piggy, it's a little bigger than.
We'd still need to get the right of way.
Piggyback this on the Mitchellson.
That's a big piggyback.
But, Forest Street. Well, it's something to think about.
Yeah, that's not one point four million, right?
I gotta ask about Forest Street this week too, so.
It wasn't me.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, I think that that's something you need to keep considering, at least, you know, if we can have at least informed message, messages back to the public as to. All right, if you live there, or you live near there, here's what's going on, and know what, know what's happening, because, there's a couple of, there's a couple of issues here, but I think. I just don't think we're gonna be in a situation where we're gonna see the city get, get sick of the, of the potable enough to where the city says, we're just gonna pay for it, you know. It's gonna be an assess type situation.
If it's not unattainable, it would probably be the right way to.
Right.
Present that to my constituents. But.
I'm gonna talk to all their neighbors.
Chris, what are the ideal situations to, to, to blade that, any gravel road, any?
Tipped well, like in a springing on stuff, right after, if you get a nice, nice, steady rain, it soaks in, so it's soft enough, you can blade them out good, and then you need some good drying weather after that.
Okay.
I mean, we took a chance on this last, last time we did it, I just, they need to get done.
Yeah.
As if they would've kept raining on top of that, we would have, we would have had us, we got lucky, it kinda quit raining, they packed in us, and so.
Cause I mean, uh, mine, my road, I mean, right, it's, I trust you guys can blade that.
There we, there we, we used, we backed right at the paint border, because the major is too big to get in there, so.
And I, I go, I go on North Van Mark, and I go down Forest Street every day, and I, it's just, it is what it is, I just don't know enough about what.
Yeah, we, I mean, we, we're pretty aggressive with them here the last couple of weeks, trying to get them, between the, we got plenty of ground roads, it's hard to get them all done in the day.
Yeah, we talked about that on last Friday, is to, it's just been tough for you to keep up, so.
I think Purdue has some real good, uh, stuff on the internet, uh, praline and grading, and, I mean, I've gotten into it, it's pretty entertaining reading.
Yeah.
And, uh, because, because that's a really crappy gravel road, so, you're looking at a cable kind of deal with a gravel road.
Yeah.
Yeah, you want the water off, you know.
Interesting.
There's only, but again, you're, there's only so much you could do.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Well, possibly, any more on that? All right, also under correspondence, um, I would like to, we haven't missed one yet, so now's not a good time to miss one, you know, it's late. Um, I would like to put a thank you together for John and Mitch and Sockwell Engineers and the team for helping us with our Christmas party, uh, basically subsidizing that. I think that's the word you came up with earlier, I won't put that in the thank you, but we'll, we'll write it up, and, um. I'll make sure, I'll, I'll find you guys, I'll get that written out, and, and we'll get that put together, get it signed, and, and I won't pass around like one right now, cause I don't have one, I mean, but. That's what I'd like to put for our thank you. All right, was it me? Somebody's got anything else? All right.
I'll make a motion with you on Xavier Sessions.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I think we ought to make another motion in there first.
I'm making a substitute motion.
To?
That we give Audra a fifty cent raise retroactive to her six-month. Fifty cent an hour raise retroactive to her first, to her six-month anniversary, to be reevaluated in January with the rest of.
So you stand.
All second. All right, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Perfect.
I'm going with you, Jerry.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
All right.
You're cruel, man.
Well.
Just call tomorrow, like you always.